All right, I will call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, January 24th, 2024, to all person interested in or affected by the actions of zoning board of appeals are hereby notified pursuant to Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all amendments thereto that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held on Wednesday, January 24th. First call to order with introduction of board members: Herb Bodenseek.
Present.
Paul Pennard is absent. Mark Hanson.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
Denise Johnson.
Present.
Larry Hurwitz.
Present.
Manny Alves.
Present.
And I am Jacob Dewey as chair. Moving along, notice of recording this meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being recorded and broadcast on the town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, please make their presence known. Seeing none, no one is recording the meeting. The first order of business is minutes. We have minutes from November 8th, 2023, to approve.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
And a roll call, or actually, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstained because I was not present for that meeting. Old business, Appeal Number 2023-014, Ernest J. Jackstimer has filed an appeal of administrative official decision in accordance with Barnstable Zoning Ordinance, Section 24125B1A, and MGL Chapter 48, Section 8 and Section 15. The petitioner seeks to overturn the notice of zoning ordinance violation and order to cease, cease, desist, and abate immediately from the building commissioner dated May 26, 2023. Summary of violations determined by, by the building commissioner, including Barnstable Zoning Ordinance, Article 2, General provisions, Section 247A, 24010A, Article 3, District Regulations, Section 24014A, 1, Article 9, Site Plan Review, Sections 240100A, 24101B, 24103B, 24103C, 24103K, and 24105G. The subject properties are located at 1450 Ostriville West Barnstable Road, as shown on assessor's map 127 as parcel 007001, and 1450 Ostriville West Barnstable Road, letter A, as shown on assessor's map 127 as parcel 036. Both properties are located in the Residence FRF zoning district. This has been continued from July 26, 2023, September 13, 2023, and November 8, 2023. And I don't believe members were ever assigned. Is that correct? No, they were not? Okay. Should we assign members now?
I'm not sure you should, but I'm going to address you.
Okay, I guess, yeah. If you want to address us, and then we'll determine if we need to assign members.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Appeals, Mike Ford representing the applicant. Over these many months that we have asked for continuances, and the board has graciously granted them, we have been working expeditiously with the building commissioner in an effort to resolve all of the violations on the site. And I think we're very close. I had intended, when I came this evening, to request a withdrawal of the appeal, having gotten to that point. However, we are working on a site plan that the building commissioner had requested. I thought, and we had anticipated it would be done before this evening. It is not yet completed. I just spoke with the building commissioner, and he has no problems consenting to one additional month to get that site plan to him, and then it would be our intention to make the request for withdrawal of this appeal. So at that point, you would assign members if you follow that recommendation, and deal with the withdrawal of appeal at that point. I was contacted today. I wanted to let the board know via counsel who I've been in contact with, who represents the Butters, and I told him that I would be making this request tonight, and there would not be a hearing on the merits tonight, and he thanked me. Those are the only parties in interest that I'm aware of that have an interest in this, obviously other than the building commissioner, who is here.
Okay. Do you, is, what's the activity on the property been during this whole time period? Has everything ceased?
Yes, all of the activities that were a problem ceased, and it's been a gradual cleaning up of the site, removal of equipment, removal of items that were out there, piles of things, firewood, construction materials. We have a couple of large piles of loam still that will be removed from the site. And what we're doing is, on the site plan, is putting the barn that was supposed to be built for part of the agricultural use in a different spot. And that's what's taken the while to get a new site plan done and get it to the building commissioner for review by site plan review.
Okay, so your intention is to bring it into compliance with...
Absolutely, that's what we've been doing all these months. We've been working to get there, and the site plan will, will be the piece that will allow me to withdraw this without prejudice.
Okay. So did you have a date you proposed?
February 28th.
February 28th, okay. Does someone want to make a motion to continue Appeal Number 2023-014 to February 8th, 28th?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Ford. All right. Moving along, still old business, Appeal Number 2023-039. Daniel and Karen Baird have filed an appeal of administrative official's decision in accordance with 240-125B1A and MGL Chapter 48, Section 8. The petitioner seeks to overturn the notice of violation in order to cease, desist, and abate from the building commissioner dated September 11, 2023. Summary of violations determined by the building commissioner include Barnstable Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 240, Section 14A, 1 RF residential district, and Chapter 240, Section 10C prohibited uses, specifically the use of a trailer camper as a substitute dwelling unit or for temporary sleeping purposes on a property without a permitted principal dwelling. Subject property is located at 27 Falcon Road, West Barnstable, Massachusetts, as shown on assessor's map 196 as parcel 032. It's located in the Residence FRF zoning district. This was continued from December 6, 2023, and no members were assigned. So I think we're going to go forward with this tonight, so I'll assign members.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, it's going to be very similar to what you just heard, Mr. Attorney Ford. For the record, my name is Brian Wall. I represent the petitioners in this matter. And as you read the notice, it's an appeal of a cease and desist and a notice of violation issued by the building commissioner's office. It was continued the first time because the commissioner did not have an opportunity to see the appeal, but I had the opportunity to talk with him this evening, and we would like the opportunity to sit down and try to work it out. It's a question of, and I don't want to put the cart before the horse and put too many words in the building commissioner's mouth, but he was unaware of the contention that my clients claim that the land is in agricultural use. So if we could have a month to talk, we would ask the board to grant us a continuance.
Okay. Again, I'll ask the same question that I asked Attorney Ford. So did this actually cease, or is it continuing to operate?
The trailer, I'm not exactly sure. I don't want to say something that I'm not aware of. I believe the trailer is not there anymore because they took it to Florida with them. They're not, they're not actively using the property, but I don't want to represent that. I don't know for a fact. But I can tell you the trailer's not being used. My clients are in Florida for the winter.
Okay. All right, so did you, what date, did you say, a month from now, so February 28th?
That would be fine, thank you.
And is that okay from a scheduling? Yeah, okay. So I'll make a motion to continue Appeal Number 2023-039 to February 28, 2024, with no members assigned. Denise, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, so that is continued. Okay. Aaron Webb recuses himself.
I wish. Got all my stuff, I'm out of here. Good luck.
All right, Appeal Number 2023-010. Arista Hyannis LLC has applied for a special permit in accordance with Section 240-25B22 and 240-25C10, drive-through for a proposed restaurant. The applicant proposes to remodel the former bank building and change the use to a food service establishment with a drive-through. The subject property is located at 715 West Main Street, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on assessor's map 249 as parcel 155. It's located in the Highway Business HB district. This was continued from May 10, 2023, and July 26, 2023, and September 13, 2023, and November 8, 2023, and January 10, 2024. Members of the signee room, myself, Paul Pennard, Mark Hanson, Aaron Webb, and Herb Bodenseek. Paul is not present, and so Manny Alves has mullered in.
I was, I was, because I heard the last one.
Oh.
I'm mulling in for...
Yeah, for, for Paul.
For Aaron.
So Aaron was, and was Denise was on this?
Denise was present.
Okay.
Original hearing.
So Denise is filling in for Aaron, then?
Paul.
For Paul?
Yep, Paul.
You're filling in for Aaron.
And you're filling in for Aaron?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So it's going to be Manny, Herb, Mark, myself, and Denise. Attorney Cox, whenever you're ready.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney with the firm of Nutter, McLennan &amp; Fish, here this evening on behalf of Arista Hyannis LLC, which is both the owner of the subject property and the applicant in this special permit. Joining me this evening is Greg Batzavales, who is the manager of Arista Hyannis LLC, and also a principal of Fashion Foods LLC, which is the franchisee that would be the tenant and operator of the proposed Wendy's. In addition, from Fashion Foods LLC, present this evening are also Usama El-Sarahi and Terry Smiley. And then from our consultant team, Randy Hart, who's our transportation engineer from VHB, is sitting at the table to my left. As, as the chair and the board were noting, this project has had one substantive hearing before the board. That was back on May 10th of last year, and then several continuances. Just as a reminder, in terms of what the project consists of, since it's been a little while, the subject property is 715 West Main Street in Hyannis. It's within the Highway Business, the HB zoning district. And the project consists of several elements. The first is remodeling the existing building that's on the site, the former bank building, within the existing footprint to create a proposed Wendy's restaurant. So there's no change in the square footage of the building. All of the changes would be within the interior. The use of the site as a Wendy's restaurant is allowed as a right, i.e. no zoning relief for that use in the Highway Business zoning district. So we're not here for the Wendy's restaurant component. In addition, as part of the proposal, the applicants are proposing to reconfigure and reuse the existing drive-through stations. Presently, there are two that were there for the bank. One drive-through window is proposed with the Wendy's. Within the Highway Business zoning district, drive-throughs are allowed as a conditional use by special permit, and that's the reason that we're here with this application before the board for the drive-through. The third element consists of site, certain site improvements. Pavement is being slightly reduced. New stormwater infrastructure is being proposed to improve stormwater. There's new plantings, and as you'll see on the site plan in just a minute, there are also some safety improvements with reconfiguring of the curb cuts. All of that work is also allowed as a matter of right. There's no dimensional relief needed for that work. So we're here just to talk about the drive-through, which is the conditional use special permit application pending before the board. That's what's before the board's review. The standard set forth in the zoning ordinance is whether that use substantially adversely affects the public health, safety, welfare, convenience of the community. At the May 10th hearing, we gave a full presentation to the board, and concerns were raised by the board relative to transportation congestion, safety, and queuing. In the staff report, the planning department representatives had recommended a peer review of the large transportation assessment that VHB had included, and the board voted unanimously to undertake that peer review, and that has occurred. And so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to turn the microphone over to Randy, kind of walk through that peer review process. I know the peer reviewer is here as well, that the town hired, and then I have a few slides to wrap up after Randy speaks. I'm going to hand you this.
Well, good evening. Randy Hart, principal with VHB, where the transportation engineer's on the project. I'm going to keep my remarks very short. I want to just do a couple of things. Talk very quickly about the access and circulation that's being modified, because I think it's an important component of the project. The other thing I want to touch on is the peer review process and some of the key findings that have come out of that process, which is now complete. In terms of the access to the site under existing conditions, the aerial shows that there are three access driveways today, two full access driveways, one of which is on West Main Street, just offset from the Pine Street and Barnstable High School driveway itself, so very close but not in line with, with the Barnstable High School driveway. There's a full access driveway on Pine Street on the western side of the site, and then an egress-only driveway on the western part of the site that is for the drive-through exit movement. So under the proposed plan, we are doing some access consolidation, which I think is important. The full access wide driveway on West Main Street would be narrowed significantly and be designed to only allow right turns out. So today, you can make a left and right in. You can make a left and right out. Under the future plan, it would be a right-out only. And given the proximity to Pine Street and the Barnstable High School driveways, it's very important that it's limited in that fashion, and it absolutely reduces conflicts in that particular area. The Pine Street full access driveway will remain as it is today, same location, pretty much the same configuration. I think it narrows just a touch. And then the drive-through egress driveway will remain where it is as well. So at the last hearing, it was decided that the town would hire a peer consultant to review all the aspects of the traffic work that has gone into this project. After that hearing, the applicant planning department agreed upon a scope for the traffic work that would go forward. The town has since hired environmental partners who are here tonight to review all aspects of the traffic work. And then there's been a bunch of exchanges, starting in August, and September, October. They've asked for information. We provided. They wanted a different analysis. We provided. Instead of talking about, you know, each submission that we had, I'd just tell you that we went back and forth a number of times. And then recently, we did have a meeting, virtual, with the client, VHB, the town staff, and environmental partners prior to them issuing a final letter on the project. That was on Friday, October 27th. And then shortly thereafter, November 1st, environmental partners issued a final response letter based on the information and project modifications that were provided. In the summary section of that November 1st letter, page 13, environmental partners stated, and I quote, "VHB has provided additional information and adequately addressed most of EP's comments from the original peer review," end quote. At that time, there were only two outstanding comments that were really minor site plan adjustments, which have since been made. So I think it's comfortable for me to say here tonight that we've addressed all of the concerns that have been raised during that process. One of the key findings in the environmental partner's summary on page 13 of the November 1st letter states, and I quote again, "Based on the updated information provided in the response to comments, and if the matter in front of the ZBA is specific to the inclusion of the drive-through window and not the redevelopment itself, EP agrees that there is no substantial difference in traffic operations between the Wendy's with a drive-through and the Wendy's without a drive-through." So they've confirmed what I told you at the last hearing, that based on the projections from the IT manual, there really isn't a substantial difference between the two. As Eliza's already mentioned, the standard for review based on the town of Barnstable zoning is that the project must not substantially adversely affect public health, safety, welfare, comfort, convenience of the community. And given the fact that the change between with a drive-through and without isn't significant, I think, I think we meet that standard. In EP's November 1st letters, they also confirm VHB's opinion that there would be very little difference in traffic operations between the prose use and the former bank use. And that's something that I presented to you at the last hearing as well, based on the projections for each type of use. And you look at the volumes and the operations comparatively, there just isn't a significant difference to point to. So that's a very quick summary of where we are in terms of the peer process, and happy to answer any questions this evening if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. I just have a couple more slides before I'll turn the podium over. Okay, so being mindful of the comments from this board and the public comments that we heard regarding the West Main Street, Pine Street, and Barnstable High School driveway intersection at the last hearing, we, and since that last hearing, we have met with various town departments to try to learn more about the potential solution for this intersection. This included a meeting about 12 days ago, which was very informative, with the town's DPW director and town engineer. And what I have on this slide is the cover page of the FY 2024 capital budget and capital improvement plan for the town. And what we learned at that meeting that we just recently had with the DPW director and town engineer is that the signalization of this intersection is a priority project for the town. It was identified, is identified as such in this plan, the cover page of which is on the screen. In addition, at the meeting, we learned that the town has funding for the design of a traffic signal at this intersection, and we also learned that the design work is expected to be started within the next few months to design a signal at this intersection. This next graphic is pages 242 and 243 of that capital improvement plan. And as you can see on this screen, and I know it's a little bit hard to read, but the pages identify this as a priority project, as I mentioned. They also set forth more details about a proposed signalization of the intersection, including a scope that includes installing traffic and pedestrian signal equipment, pedestrian curb ramps, sidewalks, crosswalks, traffic signs, and pavement markings. This report also notes that a signal is warranted at this intersection. It sets forth justifications for the signal, including the need to improve public safety, convenience, and accessibility. And as you can see, there are estimates for the cost of the design, which we have learned is funded for the signal, as well as the cost of construction, including a proposed construction start in 2025. We think this is clearly excellent news for the town, as the signal is the obvious solution for this intersection. This plan shows, just, this is a plan that we received from the planning department, but from DPW, just some sort of early concepts and ideas for the signalization. Obviously, as I mentioned, as we learned, and we learned, the design is funded, and work is expected to be started on that design in the next few months. These concepts will be advanced to create a formal signalization plan for this intersection. Putting aside the conclusions in the VHB traffic study and the peer review report, which you all have seen, Randy highlighted a little bit tonight, wherein it is concluded, we suggest that the drive-through window will not have substantial operational effects. Putting that aside, my client is willing to accept as a condition of approval by this board, a condition that would tie opening the window, the drive-through window, to the signalization of the intersection. And so we've drafted on this screen a proposed condition for the board's consideration that would say, "The drive-through window may not be used for customer transactions unless and until the intersection of West Main Street, Pine Street, and Barnstable High School Drive And that's a condition, in addition to the draft conditions that are in the staff report, that we would be willing to, to accept as part of this request. I wanted to take a moment and walk through, respond to, some of the comments that are within the record. I know there's quite a few letters that have been submitted. We've seen them. I'm sure the board has read them as well. I would say the, the letters sort of fall into two categories. The first category is opposition to a Wendy's or a fast food restaurant going into this location. And in response to that, I would say that that frankly is, is not within the purview of this board. In 2018, the town council, the legislative body for this town, made the decision to allow a long list of by right uses, including restaurants, including fast food restaurants, including retail, and a whole list of uses that can go into this site as a matter of right. So frankly, you know, those comments aren't relevant for this special permit application because this is a use, the restaurant, the fast food restaurant, that's allowed as a right in this location. The second set of comments relate to concerns with traffic, safety, congestion, and queuing. And in response to those comments, I would say that the traffic impacts have been thoroughly studied and peer reviewed by the consultant that the town hired. Within the special permit purview of this board are the transportation impacts associated with the drive-through. Again, not with a restaurant, but with the drive-through window going into the site. And if you look at the environmental partner's report, and Randy quoted this earlier, it indicates that we concur that there is no substantial difference in operations between the fast food with drive-through window and without drive-through window. In addition, as part of their peer review of the transportation information that was submitted, environmental partners looked at the queuing. They initially asked VHB to go back and make some adjustments to the queuing methodology, which VHB did in the back and forth that Randy referred to earlier, resulting in a maximum queue at much busier locations. As you'll recall, the queuing was done based on empirical studies at two other Wendy's here on the Cape on much busier roadways than this proposed location. And with those additional adjustments that environmental partners asked to be considered, the maximum queue at those other busier locations would be 10 cars. Here, this proposed site can accommodate comfortably 11 cars in the queue, and I think probably frankly, one more, one or two more, but 11 cars comfortably on the site. In addition, environmental partners also commented about a traffic signal, and they indicated that they understood the town was considering installation of a traffic signal at the, at the intersection, which environmental partners indicated would likely improve the traffic operations at this intersection. And so with the proposed condition that we have submitted tonight, and notwithstanding the evidence and the facts as peer reviewed, which show that the drive-through has no substantial effects, the applicant has proposed a condition not to open the drive-through window until that intersection is signalized. In addition, and we kind of hit on this at the last meeting, there are other benefits of this project. It maintains the Cape Cod architecture and aesthetics. There's an investment of capital going to the site, which renovations and improvements to the building, landscaping improvements, improvements to the parking lot, access management improvements with the curb cut restrictions, limited hours of operation. And by that, I mean the town allows restaurants to be open until 1:00 a.m. That's not proposed at this site. We're looking for probably about 11:00 p.m. close is what's anticipated, but not what the town allows for restaurants. And then providing a convenience with the drive-through, particularly for elderly, disabled, or parents with young children in the car, having the option of using the drive-through is a significant convenience. So wrapping up, I would just note that, again, the board's purview here is limited to just the drive-through. We believe we have demonstrated that there is adequate queuing for the proposed drive-through, and the calculations on that have been peer reviewed. We believe we have demonstrated that the drive-through does not have a substantial impact on traffic operations. And again, those calculations were also peer reviewed. We believe we have demonstrated that there is no substantial difference in traffic operations between the former bank use and the proposed use with the drive-through, and those calculations have been peer reviewed. We discovered that the signalization of this intersection is a priority project for the town, and the design is about to start. And again, notwithstanding all of that evidence, my client is willing to abide by a condition not to open the drive-through until that signalization or that solution for this intersection is in place. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have. And as I mentioned, I do know that your peer reviewer is here if it's appropriate for them to come up as well. them to come up as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Cox. Does anyone have any questions for Attorney Cox at this time?
Questions?
I think more just questions right now.
I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Attorney Cox. And I appreciate the efforts that the applicant has gone through to, to accommodate and meet with the town and, and, and the added condition that you are proposing. A question, on, on the statement that the traffic operations would be the same with or without the drive-through, what's the assumption on the size of the restaurant?
Randy, do you want to? I'll let Randy respond.
And the reason I ask is, I think with the drive-through, the proposal is to have a minimum number of seats. I don't remember how many, in, under 10? Is that right?
Yeah, so, so the square footage of the restaurant's the same with or without the drive-through. In terms of the seats, I'll have to defer to Liza or Greg on that. But the point I want to make is that the, the data that we look at for, with a drive-through versus without a drive-through comes from the same source, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE Trip Generation Manual. And the data that they put forward is real data from counts that were done at driveways at similar fast food facilities all over the place. So, you know, using data from locations that have a drive-through and locations that don't, it just simply shows that the, the difference isn't significant. And, you know, I think a lot of people found that surprising, myself included. But the data's the data, and it's, you know, based on real driveway count, so it's, it's necessary that we use it, and we believe that it's accurate.
So what, I guess what I'm asking is, wouldn't the conclusion depend on the assumption on the size of the restaurant? In other words, a restaurant that seats 10 people as opposed to one that sits, sits 20 would have greater impact, traffic impact, wouldn't it?
You know, I, I'm not sure I'm the appropriate person to answer that, but I will say this. I'll say that, look, if, if there's a drive-through, it's a convenient factor for sure, right? And people will go through. If there isn't a drive-through, people go in and get the food and go back to their car. They're not necessarily waiting to sit there. So it's just a function of making it easy for people to get the food and move on.
May I wait?
Yeah, just introduce yourself for the record.
... manager, Marissa Hyannis. Mr. Alves, the, the question is...
Turn the mic on. Your microphone's not quite on. Just push the button there.
Your question about square footage really doesn't apply. It has more to do with the number of seats, which in this case, you pointed out correctly, or, or we're wondering, we're going to have six seats. So using ITE numbers, those are presumptions that are made, and we also go by our experience as operators of multiple Wendy's stores. So that is really what dictates the volumes versus the square footage. It's not really related to square footage. And to be frank with you, these days, it's not really related to number of seats as well. Like Hyannis has a very high number of seats, 70 seats, but they're hardly ever used. It's, we're in an environment where, you know, drive-through, mobile ordering, et cetera. So it's not directly relational to square footage. And we don't have any plans to reduce the square footage. That's what the building is, and that's what we intend to use.
Do you have any other questions, Manny?
I think I understood the answer, but yeah, one more. The comment about the, the impact being the same with a fast food operation as it was previously with the bank. I, I think at the last meeting, you acknowledged that obviously there, that, that there are times during the day when it, it's higher intensity for your operation. I'm not sure how it works for the bank, if there's similar frequencies of, of heavy use. But I, I guess I was wondering if you could speak to that. If, the concern I have, and, and there was a question here, believe me, i- is that the times when, and you acknowledged this at the meeting, at the first meeting, when this would be at its highest use would coincide with lunchtime at the high school, with kids perhaps leaving campus, and all leading to safety concerns, with kids crossing the street and so on? So can someone speak to?
Sure.
How is it that the, the, how do we arrive at the conclusion that this would be similar to the operations of the facility as a bank branch?
Good question. So we provided for you in, I think it was in the original traffic study, but definitely in the response to comment document to the environmental partners' review, a comparison that looks at operations of the intersection adjacent with the proposed project, which is a Wendy's with a drive-through. It then had a column that shows a Wendy's without a drive-through, and the third column was if it were re-tenanted as a bank with two drive-throughs. And if you go just column by column across the operation analysis of that table, it shows you very clearly that the changes are super minor where there is a change. You know, it might be another second delay or two seconds, maybe three seconds of delay, but it wasn't anything that jumped out. It was very minor. And if you look at the volume differences between the, you know, proposed Wendy's with the drive-through and the bank, we do show a couple things. We do show in the morning, for instance, that we reduce volume at that site. The bank would have higher volume than a Wendy's in the morning, peak hour. During all the other periods, it's an increase, but the increase is, I think it ranged, and I'm going from memory here, but it wasn't more than 50 cars over the course of a 60-minute period, so maybe one car, you know, a minute or, or less. But it, it was relatively minor, and when you, you know, look at that from an operational perspective, it makes sense that we didn't see a lot of change in the operational table. So, you know, I, I recommend you, you'll take a look at that table if you haven't looked at it in the past, because it really, it tells the story.
Thank you. Attorney Cox, just a follow-up on that. If someone wanted to open a bank with a drive-through today, they would have to come back for a special permit. It's been more than two years.
Yeah, I, I...
Would be looking at the same traffic study then with the same amount of, of traffic?
If the board took the position that it was abandoned, then I, I suppose that's right, but I haven't looked at that, and I haven't had that conversation with the building commissioner.
Okay. I was just hoping you could just highlight the changes from the May meeting to now of the site plan, and it looks like maybe the interior of the restaurant changed a little bit, and just the...
No, there haven't been any changes to the site plan since we were back here in May. Actually, Randy might be correcting me.
That's, that's not exactly right. We, we did add a bunch of signs and lines based on input that environmental partners had. They made some great comments. We totally agreed with them, so we have incorporated them. I can't remember verbatim which, you know, what changes were, but there was three or four changes to, you know, signs and lines that we did at their recommendation.
Stand corrected. Thank you, Randy.
Okay. And so we didn't lose seats in the restaurant? This number of seats stayed the same?
That has not changed.
Okay. And the number of parking spaces stayed the same?
Correct, and the parking spaces comply with zoning based on that number of seats.
I guess one thing that we had, we had discussed was just deliveries. Is there any more discussion on how the deliveries are going to take place? I know there was talk of they'd be in the middle of the night or something of that nature.
I think we had discussed early morning deliveries, potentially before the store opened at 6:30, and they would be directly in front of the store. There would be an added door on the West Main Street corner of the building where the deliveries would come in to the kitchen.
And so the truck would never have to go backwards?
No, no. All the turning radiuses were dealt with, with the fire department for their equipment, et cetera. So truck would be able to come in, pull up in front of the store, and then exit from West Main Street.
Okay. And I guess the only other question I had, just as the traffic signal has come to light now, you know, none of the, the peer review or the, the traffic study took into account there being a signal intersection there, correct?
I'll let Randy respond.
That, that's correct.
Okay. Does anyone else on the board have questions? Go ahead, Mark.
I wondered, while we're just speaking about traffic, I thought I might just ask this question. So in the other locations, if I were to take Mashpee location and the Hyannis Rotary off 132 location, both those locations allow, I believe, and please, you might be able to correct me here, allow for a bypass of the, of the main lane that would be turning into the, the Wendy's. So on Route 28, I believe that is a traveling eastbound. It does have a broken line. You can legally go out and around safely, obviously. It's got a straight line of sight. Coming off the Rotary, also, there are two lanes there to be able to go out and around where the turn is. Where this entrance is, is, I believe, is a blind corner, no passing. Do you have concerns on Pine Street that if it comes around the corner, and especially if it does, just as you're mentioning signaling, I'm thinking, it's a pretty short run between West Main Street and Pine Street. Do you think there would be an issue there where legally you can't go out and around traffic that might be turning in should it start to back up? And, and then there's exiting traffic as well, especially considering maybe stopgaps or how, how the lights might be timed on West Main Street itself. Do you think there's a danger for people wanting to go out and around even though it is not a legal turn, I guess?
When you say out and around, I'm not following you. I'm sorry.
So if, as you, as you come from West Main Street, you come on to Pine Street, and you come around where the parking lot is currently, and that is the main entrance which you are showing to come into the parking lot, into the drive-through and/or the bypass lane. It, it's a single-lane road...
Yep.
Where there, it's a double-lined road, so I'm assuming legally there is no passing there, and it would be a detriment with high-flow traffic coming, say, from Centerville, Ostrerville, or even from exiting traffic on the drive-through side. If they were to signal that, would that, would you have any concerns or any thoughts about if the traffic started to back up going, making a right or a left on West Main Street, does that then cause people to want to? I- is it too much of a block there? Or would it, would people be stuck before the drive-through, not being able to legally come around what I would call a blind corner? I don't have a technical term for it, but do you see what I'm saying?
I think I do. Couple thoughts on that. One is that we don't anticipate a whole lot of egress activity to Pine Street from the full-access driveway, because, you know, if, if you're, you know, if you're using a drive-through, if there is a drive-through, the bulk of the activity will happen at the drive-through. And we've demonstrated that the drive-through queue can be accommodated within the area on site, so we don't see any spill back onto the roadway, so I don't think that's an issue. Yeah, certainly if, 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 if it's difficult to make a left-hand turn out onto Pine Street because of the signalization, and I don't know that that's the case, because no one's analyzed it.
I don't either. That's, that was sort of the thought, that if it starts to back up there, does that then stop the line from moving, then stops the line from coming in?
Well, I guess I'll say this, you know, a couple of things. One is that, first of all, the, the sightlines are adequate. We've measured those, and environmental partners has confirmed, you know, that, that we're good in that regard. So the sightlines are, are excellent. So if somebody is waiting to take a left, and there is a queue there, you're going to see that person. It's not like it's a visibility problem or a safety issue from that perspective. You and I both know, we live on Cape Cod full-time, and, you know, during the summer season, when some of the signals back up, you're at the mercy of people letting you get into the queue. So will that happen here? It's possible. But again, no one's done the analysis with the signal to verify what the queue expectation would be on that approach. So I don't, I don't see anything, based on what I know to date, that looks problematic. You know, the site can accommodate the queues that we anticipate. The operations of the driveways look pretty good, and, you know, the sightlines are, are adequate as well. So from my perspective, based on what I know, I don't see a problem.
Yeah, I appreciate your thoughts. I, I, it was just a, we don't obviously have definitive answers, and we are just now, you know, learning of the signaling, things like that, but it did, I traveled that a lot, and I, it's just one of those things that, thinking you cannot legally go around, where in the other two locations you can. And there has been spill out, obviously, busier locations, but certainly there has been spill out onto those main motorways, but there is ability to go out and around. Just a thought.
Mr. Hanson, can I give you another perspective?
Yes, please.
Liza, can you go to the conceptual plan from DPW, please? I'll just give you a good view of, of the overall intersection from an aerial view. I don't know if you can clearly see it, but if we look at Pine Street at the intersection, there's actually two lanes right now. One is a dedicated right, and one could be straight or left, and that will probably change. But at least there are two lanes, and what you have to consider, from my perspective, would be that now when this gets signalized, I think it will help move the traffic better, because as it stands now, I think the Pine Street road is the one that's at a disadvantage, because the traffic on West Main Street continues to just go by, and you're waiting for a courtesy gap to get out there. So I, I think it's going to be facilitated much better, and that the overall intersection and movements will work much better.
Yeah, can I just add to that? That's a good point, Greg. You know, full-time residents on Cape Cod know that left turns are premiums, particularly 10 weeks of the year, right? Unsignalized intersections are particularly so, and this is unsignalized today. So I think the likelihood of a backup here with an unsignalized condition is probably better than it will be as a signalized intersection. Just, just a thought.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
Can I ask one other one? This is going to seem ridiculous. It's very easy. Does Wendy's serve breakfast?
You could call it that. They're, they're open for breakfast, and I've shared with you guys ad nauseam all the details from Mr. Alves' benefit. I, I can just tell you again that in what they call Day Part One, which is 6:30 to 10:30 in the morning, if we want to call that breakfast, the overall volume and percentage is 6.25%. So...
Okay. It was more based on the fact that it's a high school across the street. I was just curious if there were... We were talking about trips being minimized from bank use in the morning. Do they serve breakfast or anything that a teenager would consider breakfast, which can run the gamut, obviously?
Yeah, it could be a Frosty. You never know.
Right. So, you know, is it, is it in fact less? Again, we don't know until it exists, which is hard. So again, thank you for entertaining that.
If you want, go ahead, Herb.
Couple of questions. Where are you getting the bank data from? Is that from, excuse me, is that from typical bank, drive-in windows?
It's, it's from the same source that we use for the fast food projections. The ITE Trip Generation Manual. Unfortunately, when we were brought onto the project, the bank had closed. If they hadn't closed, we would have done driveway counts, but it was already closed.
It was a very quiet bank from what I ever saw, and...
It was?
Yeah. Totally quiet. It was like notable if there was an actual car at the drive-in window.
Herb, questions? Questions, Herb, please.
So...
Any other questions?
Yeah. Now, after the signal goes in, which I was not aware of, brings a lot of other questions up, but not relative to this, you'll have a different baseline data. So you're going to analyze that before you open the drive-up? I don't think so. And I'm sorry, I just don't buy that there is no difference between a drive-up window at that location and a sit-down-only restaurant. I just...
We, we didn't say...
You're taking a bunch of data that's from many, many, many different sources, averaged out, you know...
Yeah. We didn't say there was no difference. We said the difference was insignificant, and that's what the data shows. Simple as that.
Well, what happens if this insignificant difference becomes significant? Are you going to close the drive-through window? What if your predictions aren't true?
Can I offer you some thoughts on that?
Sure.
I think the standard that we're trying to meet on this conditional use is that the use of the drive-through will not substantially adversely affect public health, safety, welfare, comfort, convenience of the community. I would submit to you that because of the internal circulation and the adequate amount of stacking that we talk about in the queue, that we have concluded and that has been vetted by the peer review, we are not going to adversely affect the traffic or the safety or the convenience, et cetera. And we did look at the intersection, and Randy did look at it, and I think with what we know and speaking to DPW, they are going to do a full signalized intersection here with the correct signals and pedestrian crossings and everything. I think, and you could ask peer review if you want, but I find it highly unlikely that the intersection would be in worse shape than it is today.
I'm not sure who to ask this question, but the signalization had nothing to do with the proposed drive-through window, correct?
We have proposed a condition that we would not open the drive-through window.
Right, I'm aware of that. But the idea for the signalization, it has nothing to do with the opening of a drive-through window, correct? That was independently established by the...
The town has identified that this intersection should be signalized. The warrants are met, and so yes, that was predated, this project coming to the board.
I don't know, I have enough doubts that, anyway. The other issue I have is with the hours. I mean, 11 o'clock...
Questions? Herb, can you just ask questions? Can you ask specific questions at this point in the hearing?
Well, be more of a statement, or is that for discussion later?
That's for discussion. If you have any questions, the applicant, because then we're going to have the peer review and probably... review and probably Jim give us some background from staff.
Okay.
And you can ask questions specific to them.
I'll be bothering Jim later then. I guess that's it. I'll think of a lot of stuff later, but, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Cox.
Thank you.
Jim, do you want to just give us comments from staff and give us any guidance on just sort of, you know, our limitations of asking our peer reviewer and things of that nature?
Absolutely. Good evening to everyone. Jim Cupfer, Assistant Director, Planning and Development. I appreciate the opportunity to just talk real quickly. I did want to give some clarity to the process. Ms. Cox eloquently outlaid what the process has been to date, but as this board has rightly questioned, there are some nuances to that process, and there are some nuances to the data. And I just wanted to highlight a little bit of that. So, you know, the applicant has provided this board with a traffic analysis. I think the board did the correct thing in asking for an industry-standard peer review to make sure that the traffic analysis was done appropriately and correctly. And as was outlined, our, the peer review engineer, which represents this board, reviewed that study and confirmed that the industry standards have been met in terms of the overall analysis. But as you guys have rightly pointed out, that industry standard is not directly reviewing the local condition. So what we're looking at here is national averages of a fast-food restaurant with a drive-through, and that national average that that would avail to us. However, as all of you have already highlighted, there is a problematic intersection right next to it, there is a massive public high school right across the street from it, that while, I'll give credit to Mr. Hart, trying to provide some light to understand what those impacts of the large public high school directly across the street would be for an auto-oriented use directly across the street. I believe this board is perfectly within their purview to further that discussion and analyze that more. Because as Attorney Cox had pointed out, this zoning was changed to allow for fast-foods specifically, so it is by right. However, they made that effort with the understanding that a drive-through is not allowed by right. It is a discretionary conditional permit, and this board's purview is to look at the local condition, the neighborhood condition, and see if this request would make it more detrimental to the neighborhood. So that's what's before you, that question is before you. Would the drive-through be more detrimental than that without one? Because as Attorney Cox had pointed out rightly so, it is a by-right use. So it's whether or not that drive-through, that auto-oriented use at this location next to this problematic intersection would be more detrimental than the by-right use. Let's see. I think that's the gist of the, you know, where we are today in your purview. We do have the peer review engineer here. You do have the peer review in your package. That does outline that, again, the industry standards have been met in that the traffic study was done appropriately, but now it's up to this board to understand the nuances of the local condition and whether or not it's more detrimental by putting this drive-through in. I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Bodensee, in terms of the light, that is the extent of the design. The DPW gave me, that at the request, the applicant asked if there was any designs. I requested from DPW. Do you have any designs? Because I'm not aware of any. And that's the extent of the design that has been provided to me to date. Happy to answer any questions.
And it has nothing to do with Wendy's proposal?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Can you just give a quick, do you know what Director Santos's process is for signalizing intersections? Just like a quick timeline of like, okay, they're going to have a, they do a full traffic study first and then what their process is?
I don't want to speak for Director Santos.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for?
No questions.
Does anyone have any questions for our peer reviewer or anyone else before we open for the comment?
No.
Okay. All right, so we, this hearing was still open for public comment, but we will hear from members of the public. We'll try to limit comments to three minutes and just, again, just to iterate what Jim had said, what is before us is really, is the drive-through more detrimental to the neighborhood affected? So please try to keep your comments related to that. Do we have a sign-in sheet, Dan? Yeah, okay.
Good evening. Is this on?
I don't think...
It's not on?
I think it's on now.
Yeah, you're good.
Great. Good evening. My name's Chuck Tuttle, longtime Centerville resident. I am here in very strong opposition to the application to allow a drive-through facility at a proposed restaurant at the corner of Pine Street and West Main Street in Hyannis, 715 West Main Street. I understand that this parcel is zoned highway business, so a restaurant is a permitted use. I also understand that it must be a challenge for ZBA, and thank you for your service, to consider applications which change the use and greatly intensify traffic at property which is very near or directly abuts residential areas. 715 West Main Street is such a parcel. The highest and best use for that location is a bank, insurance office, real estate office, medical office, or some similar use, which does not significantly increase vehicle trips and therefore traffic. A drive-through situation in a fast-food restaurant like Wendy's depends on maximizing the vehicular throughput. West Main Street is already increasingly clogged, allowing an intense vehicular use such as a drive-through function at that location would severely negatively impact traffic on Pine Street and West Main Street. To suggest that a fast-food restaurant has the same vehicle trips as a low-volume bank branch is a huge stretch. The primary concern, of course, is citizens' safety. Barnstable High School is directly across the street. A restaurant such as Wendy's is bound to attract many high-school-aged kids. More students crossing busy West Main Street even after signalization is literally a disastrous accident waiting to happen. Potential loss of life is real. Add to that a drive-through situation and you have an absolute recipe for disaster. I speak for dozens of my neighbors who are adamantly opposed to a drive-through situation at 715 West Main Street. I hope that you put the interests of our community, its residents, its residential taxpayers, and the safety of our students ahead of the commercial interests of a fast-food franchise owner. This idea with the drive-through substantially and adversely affects public safety and welfare. Additionally, I hope that you require signage which is in keeping with the local Centerville neighborhood. Please don't let the signage at the new Wendy's restaurant begin to create the commercialization, visual degradation, and urban sprawl that has so severely and negatively affected, for example, Route 28 in Yarmouth. Thanks very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
I'm Elizabeth Dawes, and I live on Stanley Way in Centerville, which is on the other end of Pine Street, so that is an intersection I travel frequently. I believe this project will substantially and adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, comfort, and convenience of the community. A drive-through being shoehorned into this location concerns me not only as a retired teacher who served in Barnstable Public Schools, but also as a parent whose adult son was hit by a car turning into a Wendy's drive-through on a busy Main Street in an off-Cape community. That was also a T-intersection. Signalization was added for safety. It turned out not to be safe for my son. The person who struck him as he was cycling to work apologized and said, "We saw you there when we were stopped together at the red light, but we were looking at whether it made sense to be in the drive-through or to park, and we totally forgot you were there." West Main Street is both a street and a road. As a road, it connects Massachusetts State Route 28 with the west end of Hyannis. As a street, it has numerous addresses, including residences, schools, houses of worship, stores, offices, gas stations, and other restaurants. Motorists drive on West Main Street for different purposes, and their driving behavior, good and bad, reflects those purposes. The traffic peer review referenced standards from the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. Some standards not mentioned in the review have an important bearing on this intersection, specifically departure sight triangles and approach sight triangles. The three points of these triangles are the middle of the intersection, the decision point, and the end of the driver's line of sight. An obstruction in the sight triangle reduces the sight distance and negatively impacts the driver's decision-making. The property in question is at a higher elevation than the roadway, so the sight triangles are diminished. As vegetation on the site grew wild all last year, height was added to this topographic obstruction. It gave the observer a good sense of how a line of queued vehicles further obstructs the sight triangle. These conditions add increased risk to motorists, cyclists, and pedestrians. According to the National Association of City Transportation Officials, most streets were not designed with children in mind. Quote, "Adolescents are often on their own with people of similar ages instead of with caregivers. They may rely heavily on safe pedestrian networks and cycling infrastructure to get to school and around the places where they live." We have not heard in these hearings about the children, and there are hundreds of them across the street and scores of them who live in the neighborhood and walk to school. Furthermore, the traffic peer review itself delineates site conditions that will create delays as well as a lack of safety standards. And I'm just going to skip over those because I think I was very clear about the sight triangles. Therefore, the traffic associated with the drive-through will reduce safety for children and motorists. Common sense and science are warning us that the subject site is wrong for this use and undeserving of a special permit. Therefore, I ask ZBA to deny the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Charlene Mosley. I live at one of the four corners of Strawberry Hill Road and Pine Street. And I guess, I do have a couple of questions that I'd like the zoning board to ask the applicants. I would like to know what months of the year was the traffic study complete? And I also would like to know if the traffic study included cars turning right from the drive-through or the parking lot of the proposed Wendy's, if turning right onto Pine Street and right onto Strawberry Hill Road, and how much that would affect traffic in that area, at that intersection? We have three young children, play in the yard, and I have concerns about cars, more cars, driving in that area. And also, I do believe that this drive-through would affect the public health and safety of our neighborhood. We all live in this, or a lot of us live in this little neighborhood, because cars will be idling in the parking lot, in the drive-through line, and I just think that the zoning board should deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I've seen all your faces before at one time or another. My name's Chuck Roland. I'm a professional engineer and a longtime resident town at Barnstable. It's a little awkward being on this side of the podium. Usually I'm representing a client, so this is my first time opposing a project. I was going to kind of dive into the traffic study, but I figured I would just keep it to the conclusion. I'm just based on the peer review by Environmental Partners. Their conclusion, based on the traffic analysis, provided the addition to the project generating traffic to the study intersection of West Main Street and Pine Street Barnstable High School driveway is expected to cause additional delays and queues to the Pine Street and Barnstable High School driveway approaches, which already operate poorly independent of this project. EP is unable to provide a definitive conclusion on the impacts of this project until an additional study was done. And then further on, the conclusion, while we understand that every individual item listed above may have a minor impact on the outcome of the project, we're unable to comment on the potential cumulative effects without the items being addressed. And then I have a few of my own thoughts, is that I like things were said before, there's no emergency access for any emergencies that may happen there, as well as no deliveries without causing delays. I mean, everyone wants to say that they'll be delivered before 6:00 or after 11:00, but I think we all know that's not always happening. And then lastly, although this is a commercial area, it is close to a dense residential area, this will be a detriment to the community and the neighborhood for the added traffic additionally to litter associated with a drive-through, which I don't think has really been addressed yet, as well as this being noisy, especially during evening hours when it's going to be closing time at the bars. This place will be open till 11:00. Lastly, this is just not really the area for this, and I request that you deny this project. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Susan Fish. I live at 65 Oak Hill Road, and I also own the two wooded lots, 45 and 55 Pine Street, diagonally down from this proposed project. I think it's a shame that it's been allowed, and by matter of right, I understand that. People who decided that don't have to live with the live cooking that will be going on there, and the trash, and I imagine rats. I know it's Cape Cod, but seagulls don't generally fly over my house, and I imagine that will change, and that's unfortunate. I understand the traffic volume. They're saying that the bank and Wendy's, same traffic volume. I can't argue with their data, but I don't think, as I know they couldn't see the current volume because the bank was closed, that was a very quiet bank. I'm concerned, being a resident right off, actually across the street, Oco Road is right across the street, the exit where the drive-through will be. I'm concerned about traffic. The woman ahead of us had mentioned that, traffic through residential areas. I'm concerned, as she mentioned, the idling, the exhaust, the noise. I don't know about anyone else, but I don't have delivery trucks in my neighborhood at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning. I will have that now. That's a quiet area at night. I think Dunkin's closes at 7:00 at night. That's not going to be the case. People will go there. It'd be lovely if they could move down, what, to Bell Tower or those two strip malls down on 28. That seems a more appropriate place for that, this type of project. And I think this whole traffic with the kids, they may say that banks have a busier time in the morning. I don't think they've had a fast-food restaurant where kids can go get breakfast. I don't know if they did a study with respect to that. Or if they've been after school, if they go to Dunkin' Donuts, that place is mobbed. I think it's just a problem waiting to happen for kids, even with the signals, I get it. That's a quiet area at night. I think Dunkin's closes at 7:00 at night. That's not going to be the case. People will go there. It'd be lovely if they could move down, what, to Bell Tower or those two strip malls down on 28. That seems a more appropriate place for that, this type of project. And I think this whole traffic with the kids, they may say that banks have a busier time in the morning. I don't think they've had a fast food restaurant where kids can go get breakfast. I don't know if they did a study with respect to that. Or if they've been after school, if they go to Dunkin' Donuts, that place is mobbed. I think it's just a problem waiting to happen for kids, even with the signals, I get it. They're going to go straight across and to go in, and that's going to cause, I imagine, backup because kids are going to want to go to Wendy's after their school day. I'm concerned about traffic coming out. I just think this is a poor idea, and the issue of litter, which no one has talked about, concerns me greatly. Those two wooded areas, I already have some problem with litter. I go out as best I can and clean it up, and that's not why I live on the Cape, so I can go out and clean up litter from a fast food restaurant and really residential. It's not a good place for it, and I hope that you see fit to turn this down. And the other parking spaces, if, would it still be, I'm not clear on that, if the drive-thru were denied? If that's the case, would they have enough parking spaces? And would that cause backlog if kids want to still go or whatever after school? I don't know that. So, a lot to consider, and I'm hoping that you do what I would like, which isn't to deny it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fish.
My name is Anne Rowland. I am a resident of Centerville. I've lived there for 37 years. I do love walking, and I walk all over the place in my town. And that intersection, either walking or driving, has become a nightmare, and I'm thrilled to hear that there'll be a light put in there. But I see no end to the increased traffic in that intersection. Clearly, the town acknowledges that intersection's an issue because they are putting in finally a light. There is backup without the light, all the way back sometimes to Lambert's during busy times of the day, not even necessarily when the kids are getting out of school. This is not an appropriate place for a Wendy's. It is very close to a private neighborhood with lots of kids walking around, and I would ask you not to approve this. We already have enough traffic in Centerville. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joel Padova, and I live on Pine Street. I think that each of you are aware that it's a heavily traveled road, that recently, we'll say within the past, time flies, but I'll say within the past year and a half, we've seen the four-way stop installed at Strawberry Hill and Pine Street. That in and of itself tells you that traffic is an issue. My wife's family has lived on that property in Pine Street for over 80 years, has a small business, O'Brien's Insurance. And the traffic that we have seen over the past 10 or 15 years is significant. I would ask each of you to come to my house and enjoy an evening of traffic, not only in the summer but in the fall, where the rate of speed is ridiculous. It's the great shortcut in Osterville to head straight down Pine Street and get out there, for that and other reasons, including the trash. Wendy's, I'm sure their debris will compete with the nip bottles that I and other neighbors collect on Pine Street to try to keep that area clean. It's inappropriate to have this drive-through there for a number of reasons. The studies are what they are. There was a great president that said, "Lies, damn lies and statistics," all right? So, I think that everyone should think about, what if they're wrong? Please deny this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Bose. I work with Bayside Building Company, and like Chuck, I'm usually sitting at that table, so it's odd again for me to oppose something. Happens to be one of my old neighbors and friends, which I also don't enjoy doing. But looking at this property and talking about a traffic study that says there's not going to be any increase at all, to me is just utterly ridiculous. You're talking about a location where the bank has basically been closed for a year and a half, and the traffic is ridiculous. When the bank was open, like the other lady said, it was a very quiet bank, which is probably why it closed, because they didn't have enough customers. So, now to say you're not going to have any extra traffic coming out of that is, to me, just not sensible. I also, I'm not sure, but I looked at the plans, it looked like they only had six seats for dining, and there's not a restaurant alive that's going to be able to stay in business with six seats. So, they have to rely on the car traffic. So, you know, I understand that a restaurant is, you know, by right in that location, but the drive-through is not by right. It's a special permit. And, you know, reading what this says, you know, you can't have any more detrimental setbacks for the surrounding neighborhood, and obviously, that's what it would be. I also listened to him talk about the Wendy's on 132, but 132, there's two lanes, it's one-way, the traffic is all handled before they, you know, ever opened that restaurant. This is a tiny piece of land on a peninsula coming in, you know, to an intersection, and another gentleman talked about coming down West Main Street from Hyannis and taking a left and then going down Pine Street. That is literally a hairpin turn, and with just the grass there, it's, you know, blocks your view. When cars go into a queue, the way they've drawn on that plan, that also isn't realistic. They've got 11 cars, but the cars are literally almost touching each other to fit the 11 cars. They're going to be going around an island to keep the current parking spots. That isn't going to happen. People are going to drive in, and they're going to go where they want to go. The entrance from West Main Street crosses the queue of cars, so it's, never mind the traffic that's on the roads, the traffic jams that they'll have in their own queue are ridiculous. So, to me, to take a traffic study that's based on, you know, whatever it's based on, it's not relevant to that site. So, you know, it's the first time I've ever proposed anything in my life, but I think that you just couldn't find a more ridiculous spot for that to be put. And tonight, I sat home for an hour reading all the letters, just trying to find one that was positive. And was there any? There was not one single person that was in favor of it, and I can't believe anybody on this board is in favor of it. And if you're true to your heart, you have to realize that that's detrimental to the neighborhood that it's going into. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak?
Hi, my name is Sandy Slazik, and I live directly across from the proposed Wendy's. I'm on the corner of Oak Hill and Pine Street, little circle right there. I'm literally one minute away from the proposed drive-through coming through. I don't understand the queuing of the cars. They said 11, get 11 cars in. Not the way we drive, not the size of our cars. I've gone to the other Wendy's. I love Wendy's, don't get me wrong. The one on 132, you can, you have a long way to go around. On our little street, if you can get four cars, the trucks and the SUVs and whatnot in there, you'd be lucky. You have, I don't understand deliveries. If you have a big tractor-trailer truck coming in there, trying to make that turn going in, I'm not sure how they'd get around. Trash pickup, I don't even see where your dumpsters are going to be, never mind where the trash is going to go. I just think it's a bad situation for that small piece of property, and I just hope that you deny the drive-through. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wants to speak to public comment? All right. So, we did receive a significant number of letters. Before the comments tonight, we received 57 letters opposed to the project and one letter in support. And is that sufficient to reference this document, or?
You should read it, but that list is everybody, after the first hearing.
But we read everything in the first hearing.
Yes, but just go through the summary.
Okay. All right. So, I'll read through the names and addresses. So, Opposition Donna Mayo, 51 Holly Lane, Centerville, dated October 11, 2023. Jackie Allen, 251 Main Street, Centerville, dated May 11, 2023. In opposition, Kathy Burkery from Osterville, dated May 19, 2023. In opposition, Diane Brooke, dated May 11, 2023. In opposition, Michael Brook from Centerville, dated May 10, 2023. In opposition, C.J. Brown, dated May 14, 2023. In opposition, Nancy Brown, 34, Horatio Lane, Centerville, dated May 11, 2023. In opposition, Chris Murphy, 220 West Main Street, Hyannis, dated July 24, 2023. In opposition, Jonathan Chapman, dated May 11, 2023. In opposition, Melissa Cobb, Seaboard Lane, dated May 11, 2023. In opposition, Tom Cobb, 71 Pondview Drive, dated May 10, 2023. In opposition, Marla Carla Russo, 154 Catherine Road, Centerville, dated May 11, 2023. In opposition, Dennis Collins, dated May 13, 2023. In opposition, Allison Council, dated May 11, 2023. In opposition, Virginia Mayo, 51 Holly Lane, Centerville, dated October 11, 2023. In opposition, Karen Delfany, 22 Collins Ave, Centerville, dated May 21, 2023. In opposition, James and Jan Davis, dated May 19, 2023. In opposition, John DeYoung, dated May 12, 2023, requesting a traffic study. Diane DeCicco off Pine Street in Centerville, dated May 11, 2023. In opposition, Rick Fagan, 301 Mayfair Road, Yarmouthport, dated May 11, 2023. In opposition, Susan Fish, who also spoke tonight, from Oak Hill Road in Centerville, dated September 13, 2023. In opposition, Gloria Hanson, Long Pond Circle, dated October 6, 2023. In opposition, Peter Healy, 68 Catherine Road, Barnstable, dated May 11, 2023. In opposition, we received two letters from G.H. Hollins, dated October 6, 2023, and May 27, 23, 2023. In opposition, Raul Herta, dated October 19, 2023. In opposition, Jeannie Bond, 67 Carla Road, Hyannis, dated July 26, 2023. In opposition, Jennifer Dow, dated October 11, 2023. In opposition, Kim Murphy, a letter dated May 10, 2023, requesting a traffic study. Sarah Lapsley, 927 Route 6A, Yarmouthport, dated May 17, 2023. In opposition, James and Mary Dow. Elliot Rhodes, Centerville, dated May, October 9, 2023. In opposition, Barbara McBride, dated May 23, 2023. In opposition, Gretchen Mayer, 39 Lilian Drive in Hyannis, dated May 12, 2023. In opposition, Eman McNamara, dated May 11, 2023. In opposition, Cynthia Micalis, dated May 12, 2023. In opposition, Tracy Mitchell, dated July 23, 2023. In opposition, Virginia Murphy, dated May 10, 2023. In opposition, sure.
Michael and Marla Billido, 110 Oak Hill Road, Hyannis, dated July 26, 2023. In opposition, Richard Nichols, 300 Riverview Land, Centerville, dated May 9, 2023. In opposition, Mary Nodden, dated May 10, 2023. No address. Two letters provided from Victoria Pennella, dated October 23, 2023. And October 16, 2023, provided photos of car accident at subject location. Candy Ruffleth, Park Ave, Centerville, dated May 11, 2023. In opposition, Sean Murphy, 24 Pine Valley Road, Hyannis, dated July 23, 2023. In opposition, Beverly Slater, Hyannis, dated May 15, 2023. In opposition, Jane Spillane, 67 Toby Way, Hyannis, dated May 12, 2023. In opposition, Chuck Tuttle, Centerville, Mass, dated October 10, 2023. And a second letter, January 22, 2024. Walter and Sarah Mayo, 92 Finney's Lane, Centerville, dated May 10, 2023. In opposition, Friend and Maddie Weil, dated October 20, 2023. In opposition, Ron Winner, Carla Road, Centerville, dated May 11, 2023. In opposition, Eric Zimberg, dated May 12, 2023. In opposition, Charlene Mosley, 503 Strawberry Hill Road, dated January 21, 2024. In opposition, Bob Schulte off Elliott Road, dated January 22, 2024. In opposition, Tom Kenberry, dated January 22, 2024. In opposition, Deborah Kenberry, 62 Joan Road, dated January 23, 2024. In opposition, Kelly White, dated January 23, 2024. In opposition, no address. Kathleen Carlisle, Pine Street, Centerville, dated January 24, 2024. In opposition, Greg Williams, January 24, 2024. In opposition, Jennifer Murphy, January 24, 2024. In opposition, one letter of support from Joe Frazier, dated May 11, 2023.
All right. Was there any that we missed that came in later? I don't think there was.
I think that's up to date.
I guess we'll leave public comment open for now, I think, is probably what makes the most sense. Does the applicant want to respond to public comment, Attorney Cox?
Yeah, I'll respond to a couple of points. I mean, I think, you know, what's before the board is, again, is the drive-through. And I think there's really two questions. Are there additional traffic volumes that are going to be generated by the drive-through? We've submitted studies saying that they're essentially the same. There's no substantial, it's not more detrimental, I think that was quoted by someone. That's frankly not the standard, is substantial adverse effects. So, not more detrimental, but substantial adverse effect. And we've submitted reports that have been peer-reviewed by the town to show that there is no substantial difference in traffic volumes as a result of the drive-through versus no drive-through. The second question, I think, that's before the board, again, related to the drive-through in looking at whether there's a substantial adverse effect, is there sufficient queuing? And again, we believe that we have demonstrated with both empirical data adjustments that were made in response to the peer reviews, comments, and review, that there is adequate queuing on the site. Comments related to general traffic volumes, delivery trucks, litter, you know, respectfully, I understand those are concerns, but those are not tied to the drive-through. Those are tied to the use generally, to a restaurant use. The drive-through, from my perspective, from the board's criteria, there's really the two effects that I talked about. Are there additional traffic volumes with the drive-through? And is there adequate queuing for the drive-through? And I think we've demonstrated that there are not additional volumes that are substantial beyond a restaurant that is allowed there, and that there is adequate queuing, and that has been peer-reviewed by the town. Greg, I don't know if you have some additional comments that you want to make.
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I have every single email letter in opposition that was written. I've read every single one. I'm sensitive to everybody's comments, and I do feel that this is a very difficult situation for everybody. But in the same breath, like Attorney Cox pointed out, there are a couple of different tranches of comments that were made. The first one consisted of all the traffic, and I'll give you a little snapshot, traffic, traffic study, congestion, safety, students crossing, no traffic lights, bottleneck, increase in traffic. One person said, "Traffic light, please, please, please." The other ones that were made really had nothing to do here with the case, but they were made. And I would say to you that if it wasn't such a big issue about a fast food restaurant, that maybe a number of those letters or emails wouldn't have been written, and I'll give you that little snapshot. We don't need another We don't need another fast food restaurant. This is a residential area. It's a change of use. Urban sprawl, quiet neighborhood, trash, noise, food smells, rodents, rats, nutrient week offerings, loitering, tacky restaurant, oppose having a Wendy's, oppose fast food, protect local businesses, including the daily paper, public health, junk food, purveyor of chemically-treated and genetically-modified fast food, impact on water system, GMO transfat junk food restaurant, wastewater problem, old Cape Cod, poor diets and obesity, property values, dumpster smell. I don't know how many of these comments or letters would have been written if it wasn't for a Wendy's fast food restaurant. And I have to tell you, I want to get to the crux of the matter. Bank was mentioned a bunch of times. I think we should forget it, because we're talking about the uses that are allowed by right, and one of them is a fast food restaurant. This could be Bob's Burgers, and if we chose to sell burgers and fries and a Coke for a dollar, there would be 1,000 people a day coming in here, and there would be absolutely nothing that the town could do about it. That is not the purview of the board here. The purview of the board is, what will the drive-through do? Will it adversely, substantially adversely affect all the things that we talked about? And I would contend that because we offer the proper queuing and because we have the proper circulation, that we will not substantially adversely affect public health, welfare, et cetera, et cetera. It's really tough, I do understand that, but a lot of what we heard are opinions. I did not hear any expert testimony, contrary to our expert testimony and the peer reviewer, a sour civil engineer. I don't think he has a transportation degree. There were other people that made comments, I think, for practical purposes. Those are comments, those are opinions. Everybody has them, I feel for everybody here, but when we came to this property, we looked at the zoning, we looked at the law, and oftentimes, those things are called entitlements. And we feel that we legitimately have met the standard. On the use, it was easy. It's a fast food restaurant, is clearly allowed by right. On the drive-through, we feel we meet the criteria, and we further made a concession that we're willing to wait until the traffic signal is installed. People are begging for it. I would say to you that these people here, these abutters, should go to town council meeting and make sure that this gets funded. And I did attend the meeting with DPW and Mr. Santos, the head, and it was crystal clear when we went there, unbeknownst to us, that this has happened. Planning Board and other boards had not notified us of this budget that's been out there for many, many months. And if you are a head of a department and you don't know that this is coming, you know, shame on you, you either were trying to keep that from us, or you're not doing your job. Because there's not one department or one person in town. I did hear Mr. Axelus, in defense of him, say that there was a plan for mitigation. As a former counselor, he was doing his job, he knew that this was coming. But when we went to DPW and said, "How do you feel about a traffic signal?", he basically looked at us and said, "It's in the works. What are you talking about?"" And not only is it in the works, it's appropriated for the design, $229,000. It's coming from Chapter 90 funds. And then it is on the capital budget for fiscal year 2026, and a step further says that they plan to begin construction in 2025. I don't think you can ask for a better situation. You know, unless you truly don't want a fast food, which genetically-modified, whatever that person said, and you don't, maybe don't want a traffic civil, because you want to maintain old Cape Cod. I mean, that's where we feel we are.
Thank you. Attorney Cox, any other follow-up points?
Yeah, Mark.
Okay, so that's going to bring it back to the board for discussion. Public comment is still open, however, and we can have a discussion if it makes sense to close it, but does anyone want to make?
I'd like to make comment.
Go ahead.
You mentioned we have, we've just looked at people's opinions, not facts. I think I do have some factual basis of my looking at this. I was in marketing my whole life, and at one point, I managed all the distribution for Citibank's expansion into 18 new states. And I can tell you that the whole model of banking has changed, so that at least 60 or 70% of the business they used to do in bricks and mortar, they now do through the electronification and through all the things that can be done. You can even deposit a check from your home computer. Santander had other problems, but there's no way that I would ever accept the view that a fast food restaurant across from a high school is not going to generate more volume than a bank that is, banks are basically used now for business transactions and lending. So by nature of that, there's not a lot of traffic. And I frankly question how you would ever do a P&amp;L on this stop if you only have 10 seats without the drive-through. And by the way, our view is not to deal with technicalities of whether that area is, has no, said it could be a restaurant. Our primary thing is the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. Would it represent a substantial detriment to the public good and the neighborhood affect it? So it's much more than a broad zoning thing that says, "This could be this, it could be this." But we challenge these things all the time. It could be, but should it be? And so I really, I am a data expert on the subject of distribution.
I respectfully disagree in just because your reference to a bank. I don't think, I think the bank is a moot point here. I think.
But you base your, you based a lot of your argument on, "It will not create additional incremental traffic to the site." And it will. A fast food restaurant across from a high school of 1,000 kids? Come on.
If I could also respond to that. We gave the bank as an example, but that's not what's before the board. It's not a comparison of a drive-through versus a bank. What is before the board is a comparison of the impact, not of a restaurant going in there, not of a Wendy's going into the site, but of a drive-through going into the site. What is the added, if any, traffic associated with a drive-through, not a restaurant?
You really believe this won't generate additional traffic across the street from 1,000 kids and all the workers that drive around at lunchtime?
The.
Do you really believe that? Do you really believe that?
I think, honestly, I think the kids are going to come whether there's a drive-through or not.
But that's a different issue. It's not a bunch of cars going out into the street.
But that's the question that's before the board.
Okay, well, I think it's going to be a detriment.
Mark, go ahead.
One comment and one question, something if I could get an expansion on. So one thing I think is important to know is that obviously, when we sit up here as a board, we do have to take in, whenever we're using the terms comfort or convenience, I want to stick with the proper terms, is that that oftentimes includes the perception of the public. That is a subjective term. It does become difficult to quantify. We try to do that through the use of the letters and the comments that we get here. We do like to keep, and we're used to staying at the subject at hand. I think that the signalization of the corner is probably would have happened anyway. I think it is a, it's a new piece of information that's coming to this, that the public has not had a true opportunity to digest and to make comment. One thing I'd like to ask is that, you said the town's peer reviewer is here? Is that correct? One, when, when planning had, was speaking, they were talking about the peer review not taking into consideration the local condition, and I just wondered if they could speak to that as far as how that may or may not impact the study as it is, as it's being delivered to us. And because in my opinion, the local condition is the main concern here, and so I'd just like to hear a little further, either to what that means exactly, not taking that into condition. It seemed like that word was taken specifically, so I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that if possible.
Sorry, so you, could you repeat the question you're asking about the.
Could you just introduce yourself, just for the record, too?
I'm Jane Davis.
And I don't know if the microphone's on. Is the microphone on?
Should be a green light.
Okay.
Might have to get a little closer.
Sorry, I'm Jane Davis, I'm with Environmental Partners.
It's not on.
Maybe just switch mics.
I'm Steve Shakari, Traffic Engineering at Environmental Partners, the peer reviewer of this project.
So if I were to restate my question, and is, what is meant by, and how does it affect not taking into condition, or not taking into consideration in the peer review, the local condition?
So typically, as part of the standard traffic engineering practice, what they rely on, as it was mentioned by the applicant's team, usually the data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, trip generation is what most of the studies are based on. And that's the standard engineering practice that we reviewed. They supplemented their trip generation by some empirical data from other sites, as was mentioned. And within this methodology, there was nothing that, we took no exception to this. We understand that every location might have its own situation, it might be sensitive to local context, but this is the standard methodology, and we couldn't comment further on that based on our review.
You could not comment further?
We could not.
So, I mean, how does someone, how do we get that data? How would you suggest that we get more local conditions?
In a lot of studies that we have reviewed, there haven't been many that used empirical data. Most of them, whether the use be a fast food, or residential, or warehouse, they rely on the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual. So in the absence of that, empirical data can be collected. How, there is, to my knowledge, there is no, like, specific way of collecting that.
Might I make a suggestion? So this just occurred to me this evening.
Just introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry, I'm Jane Davis. I'm with Environmental Partners as well. It just occurred to me this evening, because this is the first that we were hearing about the signal, that, and the first that I've heard from the applicant's team, that they were willing to not open the drive-through window until the signalization of the intersection, nearby intersection. That would mean that they're going to have data before the drive-through, and then they will have data after the drive-through. So the board could consider, and I haven't spoken to anybody about this, but it was just a thought that occurred to me tonight, they will have data from both, and they will be able to do a comparison of the before and after. And, you know, thresholds could be set that say, if it exceeds a certain amount, X could be done, Y could be done, something along those lines, if that would help. That's, that is the best data that you can have, is actual data collected at the site.
Excuse me, do you mean before and after the signalization, or before and after?
No, before and after the drive-through. I'm saying at the, so if you're looking for empirical data, the best data you can have is the data at that exact site. And if by rights, the restaurant can be there, it will be open, it will be operational, you'll be able to collect traffic data, you will be able to do that after the drive-through opens as well.
But you're again comparing apples and oranges. You're comparing if it's open and it doesn't have a drive-through versus it having a drive-through.
You're comparing, sorry, no, you're, if you're comparing the site with and without the drive-through, you'd be comparing, that's the comparison that you're looking for.
Well, you said the restaurant would be open but not have a drive-through, so that, you can't compare that to the restaurant with having a drive-through.
She's basically saying, if it starts as no drive-through, we have a baseline, it gets a drive-through. We have information, real information.
Do anyone else have any questions? Sure, go ahead, Jim.
May I just touch on that just real quick? So that is the challenge, right? So we have a structure that is vacant, and they're looking to produce or put forward a use that we're questioning, the traffic impacts, the, so there's nothing that exists there today. So that's the challenge, and that's why both traffic engineers look at this from averages and estimates from national standards of the type of use. And so that's why when we're drilling down into our local conditions here, this specific site, I think, is of question, and it's something that this board needs to take seriously because of the use that's right across the street, the large school. I believe the applicant did provide some counts for that, but again, there's no true understanding of what that would impact, or how that impact would be created without those after, after-the-fact monitoring numbers, if that were to ever get to that point.
Really, the question is, is there variability in the traffic study data? Obviously, there is. It's just averages. But it's being presented as if it's a hard, fast number that isn't deviated from it all. But there's all kinds of variability. That's how it works. Unless you're dealing with some, you know, like the speed of light or something, that's finite, you know? But traffic studies, would you guys agree that there is a huge amount of variability, and there are a huge amount of different conditions here than would be in existence in all these averages and national traffic studies? Would you agree with that?
Yes, I do agree. If you look at the graphs, there are scattered points, like, to your point, there are, like, graph fits, like averages and curve fits and all that stuff. And that's, to your point, taken from all over the country. Yes, that is true. Yeah.
So that is along the lines of what Denise said, it's apples and oranges, and it's kind of a round hole you're trying to, you know, force a square peg into, as far as, and we're focusing only on traffic here, and I think there's more, there's the hours of operation, there's the lighting.
But we have to stick to our purview here.
Right.
Our purview is, is the drive, is giving a special permit for a drive-through. They can open a restaurant tomorrow there if they want to. They can open a Wendy's without a drive-through tomorrow.
Right, right, right. But it isn't just traffic that's affected, it's the things that affect the quality of life around there substantially.
Yeah, we need to, we need to stick on the substantially adverse effect of the drive-through.
Right.
That that is what we are focusing on.
And then here's a really central question. Would you open this restaurant if you didn't have a drive-through? If you were absolutely never going to have a drive-through, would you even consider opening a Wendy's at that location?
No.
I don't think the applicant has to answer that.
Thank, thank you. That was, that was my only question. Thank you very much.
Manny, do you have any questions for the peer reviewer before they go back to their Sorry, one more. Hold on. Yep.
Randy wanted to also respond to Mark's question, if that's okay.
Okay. Yeah, hang on, Manny, we'll get response before.
Yeah, I think it's important to get this on the record, that when you talk about the localized data and how we looked at this location as being different from any other location, while the peer consultant has indicated properly that, you know, there's no good way to do it from an IT perspective based on the data itself, what we did do was during the afternoon peak hour, when the school lets out, 2:30, whatever it is, I forget, at the moment, that's not a period when Wendy's is peaking. Wendy's peaks at noon. And so what we did is, we created an artificial peak hour at 2 o'clock, 2:30, just to be overly cautious about our analysis and the results thereof. So we said, IT gives us the data for noon, which is their peak. We applied that to the 2 o'clock hour, when we already had the volume on the roadway from the high school. So we created an artificial peak hour at the school let-out period as a factor of safety, just to provide as conservative analysis as we could and try to bring it back to the local level.
Thank you.
Manny, go ahead.
Yeah, the one question for the peer reviewer, and forgive me, I didn't see this in the report, if I missed it, I apologize. The comment about there being no distinction in the traffic operations between the operation of a bank and a fast food Wendy's, is that something, two questions. One, to Denise's point, how recent is the data on banks, given the increased use of the internet and. One, to Denise's point, how recent is the data on banks, given the increased use of the internet and digitization? And is that actually something that you folks looked at and concurred with?
We looked at that, again, what they compared to and what they based it on was Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation. They looked at the bank, which takes, again, all the averages from all over the country. How recent that is, I have to check, I don't know off the top of my head. But that was, all of it was based on the IT trip generation. How close that is to the local context, we don't know. But based on the IT standard practice, the analysis they provided was, we had no comments on it. There was, it seemed accurate.
The IT data covers a range of years, and they updated it, when was the most recent update? They update the trip generation manual quite frequently. So it may have some old data in it, but it would have been updated. And I can't speak to that specific land use. I, you know, I don't know off the top of my head in what years the data is from. It's available in the manual.
And these numbers are specific to trips, not queuing, not logistical. Okay.
So that data would include a lot of urban locations? Where there are, are there a lot of foot traffic, or there's a lot of larger parking areas in suburbia?
Again, I believe they give a breakdown of where the data was collected and what the locations were in the years and all of that information. I would imagine there's, it's a range.
Yes, a large range, so the average is not going to be very directional for us.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the peer reviewer?
Thank you.
All right. So we are still deliberating, discussing amongst board members. Does anyone else have any thoughts? I'm happy to share mine. Go ahead.
Just one more. I think it's important, and again, you know, we see a lot of businesses come in front of us. One of the things that we do as a board, and this is important for the public to know, is we visit the locations oftentimes of the people that are putting in application. And we are, we are also using anecdotal observation oftentimes. And although not concrete and scientific, we do make that a part of our, a part of our decision when we look at certain things like this. So I think it's important to know that we do consider that when we're looking at these situations. Some of us are closer to this than others that have, that have more experience on a daily basis with what this looks like, regardless of what's there. So I think it's important to note that we, you know, those are things that we're going to be taking into consideration in making our decision.
Anyone else? And my thing, you know, we rely on data here. Whether we agree with the data or not, it is the data that came before us, and it seems to be the standard data that we're supposed to go by. However, it doesn't take into account a school being, being right there. That's sort of an outlier that is hard to capture. And it was brought to light to us today, there's going to be a stoplight there. We have no idea how that's going to affect this. But I also go back to the substantial adverse effect of the drive-through. While it may not be the additional volume, and the applicant argued that at the previous hearing, that people are just driving down West Main Street, and they're just going to pull into Wendy's. It's not going to actually, people aren't going to get in their car to go there. However, I think the additional movement of people in and out of this parcel is going to be a substantial adverse effect. And I, I think it will be hectic movement. You know, I just can see, looking at the, the plan here, cars going every which way, cars trying to pull in, out, queuing sideways, queuing out into the road, trying to get in to get into the queue. And I just think it's going to be very hectic, and it's going to cause a detriment to that part of the town. Does anyone else have any thoughts, or?
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I think that the intra-lot traffic, the movement of cars, is something that didn't happen with the bank. I think everybody needs to accept that. The bank didn't have, you know, a divider where traffic was being routed. One way to go around is you went, you parked, or you went through the drive-through. I think that is added traffic. It's difficult to look at all that and say that it wouldn't adversely affect, or add risk, which is a corollary to safety, given the fact that there are hundreds of kids across the street. And I think that, that's one aspect of this that hasn't been addressed straight on. All of that, the data, the empirical data we've heard about is generalized, it's averaged. I'm sorry, I haven't heard of a, there's something unique about this lot that, that, and you can't escape the fact that there's a huge high school across the way.
Which will create people traffic too, which is not being counted for here.
And I appreciate the comment made by the applicant, that they've tried to artificially create a peak hour to coincide with, with, with that school letting out. But, I don't know, if you've driven around, around West Main Street, I mean, I, kids leave the campus at all hours, just around lunch, not just, you know, I think that added foot traffic.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
When Manny's done.
Just to conclude the thought, it adds risk. As I said, that's a corollary to safety, and I think it add significantly, substantially adversely impacts that, that factor.
Well, I think a lot of the things you mentioned are happening whether there's a drive-through or not. That's whether school, kids are leaving at all times of the day and hours, regardless of whether there's a drive-through. They could go to Dunkin' Donuts.
You wouldn't have that intra-lot traffic I talked about without the drive-through. Would you agree?
We have designed the site appropriately to industry standards. I believe the circulation has been vetted by the peer review. We have the queuing empirical data for that, that it shows that it's adequate. It's not just made up, it's not ITE. It's data from other stores that we have on the Cape. So we feel that we've addressed that properly, and therefore, we don't feel that the drive-through use is substantially adversely affecting public health, safety, welfare, or whatever it is. And, and if we want to, you know, just cut it down to, are we concerned about a 15-minute period when school is getting out? What is the primary concern? And, you know, I was hoping that the traffic signal would be a big answer to all the comments and questions. And by far, there, I don't think anybody here can say that this intersection will not be exponentially safer when the traffic signal is in. And we're not asking to do anything until it is installed.
Well, I think you have to take into consideration, right now, the kids get out of school, but it's beyond the Dunkin' Donut menu, and I think teenagers eat constantly. And so you're looking at them all coming out of school, and it's only 2:30, 3 o'clock. I think you've now given them a new, a destination point. And it's not that they're going to wait till dinner. They're going to say, oh, let's go over and have a burger and.
But they're going to come over whether there's a drive-through or not.
Yeah, again, we've got to stick to the drive-through. We don't have to.
The drive-through is, the drive-through is not the magnet. And that, this is a very hard concept for you to understand.
If you look at the parking lot at the high school, just about, I think, I don't know what the numbers are. But half the kids have cars.
If I could in closing, and I don't want to be adversarial, because it doesn't do any good. I have one of my former neighbors here, and I understand his, his point of view, et cetera. But I'm going to direct you to the findings that staff report did, which were revised on January 19th, or other approvals of that section. You know, these things we've been hearing from day one. Staff continues to advise the applicant of concerns with inadequate number of vehicle stacking spaces in the drive-through. Prior projects have shown a minimum of 13 spaces. That, like I said in the last hearing, is a broken record. There's no evidence to that at all. It is totally subjective, yet the planning department continues to use it. I'll direct you to the permit to findings unfavorable. Again, I'm going to start with number three. The board is in receipt of 86 correspondents and opposition, one in support. I don't know why they felt like they needed to say that. It really is irrelevant. It's not factual. It doesn't help you in your decision. I pointed out that some of them never would have been written if this wasn't a fast food. And the biggie, I can read it for you here, I don't even know what it says. You know, planning says, number four, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, what evidence does planning or anyone else have contrary to the peer reviewer and what we have proposed? It talks about networks and intersections and substantial detriment, and how it reacts with neighborhood. And, and there's absolutely no evidence whatsoever. And I would just ask you to please use your judgment within the purview of what you were empowered to do and to make the right decision in this case legally, not about feelings and what everybody wants. And, you know, it doesn't really matter what is unsupported by evidence. What matters here is what is supported by evidence. And I would respectfully ask for that consideration at the end of the day. And I think it's, it's to our benefit that there's a traffic signal being put in. We're willing to condition approval upon that. We think that will take care of a lot of the concerns and issues. It doesn't take care of everything. If you don't want the fast food restaurant here to begin with, the traffic signal is not going to help you out. Thank you.
Got a question directly to you?
Sure.
Would you open a Wendy's there if you couldn't put a drive-through?
It is not our first preference, but it's certainly one of our options, yes. And allowed by right, and we would just do it. It would be open, and all the things that a lot of people have talked about will happen. I guarantee you. Come over for a Frosty, leave at all times of day, cross the street, do this, throw litter around. All those things will happen, without your permission. Unfortunately, that is a hard, cold fact.
Thank you. Does any of the board have any more comments or discussion?
Can I just make one comment in response to something Mr. Alves mentioned? This project did go through site plan review, and really, the purpose of site plan review is to look at the interior site circulation. We did work with DPW on the signage package. Changes were made to the signs, both from DPW and, as Randy said, during the peer review process. So we did look carefully at the internal circulation and reviewed that with the town as well.
No, no, I understand that, and I appreciate you pointing that out. The only, the point I was trying to make is, that comes into play only if there is a drive-through. All the rejiggering and the movement of cars around that island you're creating, so, do you agree?
That it's different if there's a drive-through versus not a drive-through. Yes, I do agree with that.
Yeah, thank you.
If I may, just real quickly to that point, at that, this application has gone through site plan review. We, being planning board, planning department and DPW, both raised concerns of the internal circulation and the queuing, and that still stands.
Those concerns are not agreed to or from the peer review. We don't have those comments, we don't have those concerns. Planning continues to have concerns that they show no evidence and no basis of, and they're not factual. That is just the truth in this case.
Okay. Go ahead.
Would you consider the traffic studies or predictions factual? Because they're not.
I consider them done by transportation engineers who are versed in this, and that is their expertise.
It's a probable, probabilistic estimate, estimate. It's not fact, that's all.
I would just add that it is the standard that the courts look at when evaluating traffic impacts.
Yeah, for design, whatever, fine. But it's not an exact science.
Public comment's still open, did you want to speak? Go ahead.
I spoke before, my name is Charlene Mosley, I live at the corner of Starbury Hill Road and Pine Street. And I do want to mention that on the agenda here, it does say that this meeting is to talk about the drive-through for a proposed restaurant. The applicant proposes to remodel the former bank building and change the use to food service. Six years ago, in 2018, when it was talked about that, the use was changed. I was raising three-year-old twins and a newborn baby. So I was not privy to this information. I don't understand why, like, this is taking six years. I don't know when they purchased the building, but I do understand they're kind of letting it go. I don't know if it's just to become a nice source, or let people say, oh, let's just get something in there so it looks good again. But that, and then the drive-through with the traffic study and everything, was that was pedestrian traffic taken into consideration? There are actually 2,000 kids at BHS, 400 kids a mile down the road at Sturgis that does not have a cafeteria, that would probably be walking up and down West Main Street, crossing the road to get to the property. And then, again, I did ask, and I granted, I know I'm asking the board, when the traffic study was complete, how long, how much time it took to complete it? Or how much time it was looked at? Was it over summer vacation? Was it during the school year? And I had one more point I wanted to make. Oh, I believe we are the evidence, like, there are a lot of people. I know maybe the drive-through doesn't, or you don't think it affects the litter, or the traffic down my road that I live on, or you don't, you don't think all that stuff affects us, but it does. And I feel like we live in this town, the board should be listening to us as well as, you know, fancy lawyers and people that have, want the business and want the money for their, you know, people coming over and buying all the food and all that stuff. So I do feel like we should be listened to, we should be the evidence. We are in the neighborhood. There's a Wendy's two miles down the road with a drive-through. I don't understand why we need another one. That's it.
Thank you. If you want to speak, yeah?
My name is Amy Garth, I house in Centerville, as well in Marston's Mills. So, and this will lead to the amount of drive-through traffic. If you have a sit-down restaurant that serves X amount of people versus a drive-through that has to generate more food, I would anticipate more workers having to work at the restaurant, right, to produce volume for the drive-through. I'm wondering how many, and I could have missed it, I was at work, I apologize, how many parking spaces are out front? And how many workers are going to be roughly at a restaurant that can accommodate both fast food and both dining? Because if those spots are filled with workers, then it is going to force more people to use the drive-through than at a sit-down restaurant. So, I mean, I'm just guessing, one, at least one person at the register, maybe two. You're going to need one person at the register out front, one person at the drive-through, that's two. I don't know how many people to accommodate the volume of food for a sit-down and a drive-through. So you're looking at four to six, six cars potentially filling up those spaces, which would leave how many parking spots left for the customers? They are going to be forced to use the drive-through, which is going to increase the drive-through volume significantly versus a larger lot of land that would be able to accommodate more parking spots. Does that kind of make sense? So I think that it's absolutely going to be a huge detriment to the volume. I think that any study is, like you said, comparing apples to oranges. You cannot compare the volume of drive-through traffic when there is going to be extremely minimal parking out front. That is going to absolutely increase the volume going through the drive-through more than any study for a larger lot of land that is going to host a fast food drive-through restaurant.
Thank you. So I guess we have to make a decision here, if we want to close public comment? Or if, are we going to, Attorney Cox, would you like a vote on this today?
Can I just confer with my client for just a minute outside? In response to your question, Mr. Chairman, I guess I would turn it back to the board to see if there's additional information that you're looking at from us that you'd like us to provide. If you have questions from us that you'd like us to respond to. I mean, we feel like we've presented our case, but if there's additional information that the board would request of us, then, you know, we're happy to consider providing that.
I mean, for me, one of the biggest wild cards here is this now, the traffic signal that's now going to be there, to me, kind of throws the traffic study that we have out the window of how it's going to affect it. The traffic light there is going to be better, or is it going to be far worse? We don't really know. I mean, the right turn only is very going to be, I assume, very close to the traffic signal. And I know we have restrictions on how close an ingress/egress can be to a traffic signal. So we don't know, you know, what that data is going to say.
I don't know if Randy has any sort of thoughts on that. I'd defer to him.
Yeah, I mean, the right turn, yes, it's close to the intersection today. It's a full access driveway today. By narrowing it down and making it a right turn only mitigates that condition, whether it's signalized or whether it's unsignalized. So it only helps.
But we have no idea what this traffic signal is going to look like. There's going to be four crosswalks. There's going to be five crosswalks. Is there going to be a walk light before it? Is there going to be a speed bump? Is there going to be, what, are we raised sidewalks? We're at a school zone?
From the concept that they provided, there will be four crosswalks. There'll be mast arms for the signals. You know, whether it's concurrent or exclusive phasing for pedestrians, no idea. You know, so that's something that gets worked out during the design review process, which is just now getting underway.
And would the entrance to the high school change? Is it still going to be two lanes? Like, is there going to be lights there? Like, I mean...
Well, it'll be signalized. The driveway will be signalized as part of this. It's in the concept. I would probably say, out of the gate, without knowing for certain, that there's plenty of width on the approach from the high school. I can't imagine you're going to need to do any widening there. There's more than, you know, two lanes plus. So it's... And, you know, you got to look at what the intersection is today, too. There's pretty strong left-turn lanes, both eastbound and westbound. So a lot of the infrastructure that you need for a signalized, you know, intersection is in place. You know, do you have to lengthen it a little bit? Maybe. But a lot of the infrastructure is in place the way it is today.
We actually had a little bit of a discussion with the DPW. It wasn't highly technical, but Randy was there as well. And we talked about how the roads align perfectly, and there is sufficient width. And we did ask the question, is this something that you're going to expand this project and go half a mile each way? And they said, no, this is pretty much a straightforward, full signalization of this intersection. It's in the scope of work. I don't know if you could read it. Not so much the scope of work, but project description. It says, "Project scope is anticipated to include, not necessarily limited to, installing traffic and pedestrian signal equipment, pedestrian curb ramps, sidewalk, crosswalks, traffic signs, pavement markings, modifying intersection geometry, and associated work." And I think when they say modify intersection geometry, there's a footnote on the conceptual that says, on one of the corners, reduce corner radius to 20 feet. So it's nothing significant, but we take that to mean that this is a full signalized intersection, and the way that the crosswalks are shown, it shows a crosswalk against all four streets or driveways. And we can't imagine how that will not be entirely beneficial. If you wanted to, to answer your question about a vote, if you wanted to talk to DPW about that and get confirmation, I mean, that's something we would entertain.
I don't think we need additional information. I mean, I think the fact of the matter is, having a drive-through there with, and one thing we mentioned, all the buses come out at once, and they make a left-hand turn coming out of the school, which means they're in the lane that someone would be using to make the right-hand turn onto the street to get into it. So you are going to have congestion there if this is, if this restaurant is successful.
The traffic signal is going to address a lot of that, and we agree not to, you know, use the drive-through until the traffic signal is installed.
It's not going to, it's not going to revise our thinking on the volume. It's just going to be a more controlled traffic situation. It's not going to be, make it any different about how many people are going to be attracted to do this if it has a drive-through.
My definition of detrimental would be uncontrolled. If it's controlled, I don't see the detriment. I don't see the detriment now, according to everything we presented, but that's, you know...
So Attorney Cox, do you want us to vote tonight?
Yeah, I mean, unless, yes, we would like a vote unless you all need more time or more information that we need to provide.
Does anyone have any specific information or data that they would like to see or see reviewed or further elaborated on?
Is public comment closed?
It's not yet. I just don't want to close public comment until we know if we're going to vote tonight.
Could I ask just one quick question? So when you looked at this site and you looked at the, at the actual movement within the site, and we've been, we've had one photo up here of the site plan for the whole time that we've been speaking. And so at what point do you, outside of the data, the normal trip data or the queuing, do you say to yourself, how many different ways could this site possibly block up? And by that, I mean, if a light did come in, and again, I know this is a late, a late model, but let's say on West Main Street, the light stops traffic, does that then stop the traffic coming out that right-hand turn from the area of people who are being serviced from the restaurant? If that happens, or is there, you know, because they can't get out, some dummy parks across your no-parking zone there, and now the line can't move forward from the drive circle? Or if they're coming down from the bottom? It seems that there's at least four points, that there's a very good likelihood, even without the light, that it could bottleneck, and with the light, could possibly be worse. I do believe the light, obviously, is, was there for more of a safety concern. But I think it's a real question, and it's hard to necessarily put a substantive answer on it, where you can be sure, sure. But, I mean, does that come into it at some point? I really struggle with, there's so many ways that this traffic could just come to a standstill. And I just don't know how you get around it without a few legal ways to go around. There's no around in this situation where you can evade legally the way the traffic could stop. Because if we said, well, maybe, maybe it is a good situation. Well, if it's not, that is it. It appears that there's no other routes. And that was something I'm having a hard time coming to grips with on this.
Can I, before you do the technical response, can I give a little bit of a developer's layman's response? Usually, the traffic signal is the best possible case scenario for retailer or restaurant because it creates control and an ability for people to go where they want to go and for people to get into your site. The worst-case scenario is the intersection that is there now. There are no controls. You take your life into your own hands by trying to get out onto West Main or Pine or a school bus leaving, or doing whatever you're trying to do. There's no better situation than a controlled situation. It doesn't mean that it's perfect, but it's safer. It allows access. It allows egress without relying on the courtesy gap, which is someone letting you out. That's what most times we rely on, on left turns.
Yeah, and just to drill back on the start of your comment, was really, I think, really led to the, relative to the queue and the storage area. You know, we did what we're supposed to do. We went to the two closest sites that had Wendy's facilities. We did counts during the, you know, peak hour periods, and we observed the queues. And the queues, on average, were three or four cars most of the time we were there. The maximum that we saw was about eight. And this was October, so we did the adjustment to the peak summer, just to see what that would be. And that would be about 10 vehicles. We have storage for 11. The thing I said at the first hearing, and it's, I think, stated again in our memos and traffic study, is that the two locations where we did the counts are on roadways that carry 26,000 and 28,000 vehicles a day. West Main Street carries 14, nearly half in most, most instances. And we all know that fast food restaurants are heavily reliant on pass-by activity. The more volume you have on the roadway, the more activity that you will see. So we sleep well at night knowing that the empirical counts that we did to demonstrate the queue that we need were done on roadways that carry twice the amount of traffic that we did. That tells us, we have a factor of safety here, that we have more than adequate queue storage. So that answers, I think, the queue part of it. Now, in terms of getting out, I fully understand your comment, and I agree that the signal is a variable. But I look at it the way Greg does. It's a positive variable. Left turns on Cape Cod, particularly in the peak summer season, are a premium. And left turns at Pine Street are very much a premium, especially during the school, you know, pickup, drop-off. You know, having a signal at this location means every 60-second or 70- or 80-second cycle, you're going to have, you know, movement on that movement. Whereas today, that movement or the queue dissipation is related to gaps in traffic that may or may not exist. The signal creates gaps, which creates movement. So if you had to compare one to the other, without even doing any analysis, without putting any pen to paper, I'll tell you that the signal is better every day of the week.
Sure. And again, this is just to gather information, but of course, when we look at this, you would admit that's a slightly different situation in that there is no signaling to get out.
That's correct.
And so any blockage of that laneway immediately stops it. Again, I agree that you did go to those locations, and it does make 100% sense how you did it. One street, and it's one street in and one street out, and the volume of traffic can be handled that way. I'm just saying that this is a situation where you've got a turnout that could be stopped. You've got a turnout of a drive-through that could be stopped. You have a turn-in that could be stopped, and no ability to go around it. That was just my concern, in that we really don't know. And I, again, I know that's a horrible answer, but it's something certainly you have to think of. And just beyond that, in still thinking about the drive-through itself, is that I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we are still considering things like comfort and convenience of the public with regard to whether or not that drive-through creates a nuisance in that sense. I think the perception is that. Again, not concrete evidence, but it is something certainly that we consider, both in this and other applications. So, but I am, I'm mainly stuck on the, what I believe could potentially be some really serious choke points with no, what appears to be no legal way to circumvent.
Okay. So we still have public comment open. We still have the public hearing open. Does someone want to make a motion to close public comment? Go ahead. Come on up. And then we're going to try to wrap this up.
So again, my name is Jimmy Boz. A couple things I want to say. I love Greg as a guy. I respect him as a business person. I love Wendy's, you know, so I don't have anything against that. But you keep being told what you can and can't do under your power. And so a special permit states that if it's more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood, you have the right to say no to it. And we're here, over and over and over again, we hear that we're here for a drive-through which is, requires a special permit. To me, if you put a stoplight or a four-way intersection there, that doesn't help the surrounding neighborhood. It hurts it because there's one entrance onto West Main, and there's two onto Pine Street. And they're going to force people out that way. And if it was a true restaurant with enough seats to sustain that business because the people can eat there, when they're through eating, they throw their stuff in a barrel, and they get in the car, and they go home. When they're in a drive-through, they're more likely to throw things out into the surrounding neighborhood, which is also a detriment. So while he makes it sound like this is going to happen, it isn't just going to happen in a regular restaurant. It's going to happen in a restaurant that needs a drive-through, which he needs a special permit for, which you have every right to say no to. And that's what I think you should do.
Thank you.
Can I, can I make a final remark, please?
Sure. And then we're going to close public comment.
I love Jimmy Boz more than he loves me. Here's the, here's the standard. In de novo review of agency proceedings, the appellate court's review consists of considering whether the agency erred in law or whether its decision is wholly unsupported by the evidence or clearly arbitrary or capricious. There's a standard by which you have to make the decision. That's not confrontational. It's, that's a fact of law. So whatever you want to do with it, you can.
Well, our charter is to, in part, is to make sure that things are not a detriment to the neighborhood. And there's not, a case we've gone over in the two years I've been on the board that we don't, that isn't a part of the analysis. So we do have to consider, not the comments about whether they like your food, but we do have to consider the fears of the neighborhood about things like the quality of life being impacted.
Those may be fears and not actual. And then what do you do?
Well, there's a bit of common sense that comes into thinking.
Well, there's a difference between common sense and personal preference, and that's a fine line. So I think you need to be very careful with that.
All right. So would someone like to, Jim, did you have any final staff comments?
We have all.
No, I would, I would just recommend to this board, when challenged with legal action, to consider closing the hearing. Thank you.
Of course.
All right. Our last public comment, and then we're going to move this along.
Elizabeth Dawes, Centerville. We've heard a lot about, you know, not having empirical evidence. When the business was active at that property, when you would take a left turn onto Pine Street, you had to be very careful rounding the curve in case there was a car turning in. It's very steep, that property's at a higher elevation. Cars have to take that turn slowly so they don't bottom out. All right? So, so whether it's signalized or not, you have to virtually come to a stop to let the car in front of you execute that right turn. And then, in a matter of a couple yards, if there's a vehicle exiting, you're coming to another stop again. Now, signalization controls traffic, but it's not going to control what's happening along that curve with the two driveways. And I, and that is just based on my personal experience over the years when there was an active business there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would someone like to make a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing public comment? Aye.
Aye.
All right. And so now we need to make a motion to close the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Do you make the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you made the motion. Motion to close public hearing, sorry.
Our discussion completed, then?
No, that's going to come back to us to deliberate.
Very good.
And make findings. So are you seconding, Herb?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
All right. So the public hearing is closed. That brings it back to the board to deliberate amongst ourselves and/or if someone wants to make findings.
I have comments.
Sure. Go for it.
Let's deliberate. First of all, I, this is very difficult. I appreciate all the efforts the applicant has put into this, both in looking at what admittedly are averages in terms of the empirical IPE data, but also looking at similar. And I think this is where the rubber hits the road, in my way of thinking about this. The restaurants on 132 and M. Ashby are Wendy's. Those locations are very different from the lot we're talking about. That's a major highway. There's, the lots are different. There's no school. I mean, I can't get around, the major distinguishing factor of this property is the fact that it sits across from a major school. There's just no comparable. And I appreciate the efforts and the lengths that the applicant went through to look and try to find comparables in terms of, you know, how many cars in a queue through the drive-through, the highest peak and how that compares, and trying to say that we could stay lower than that, and they get more volume because they're in a bigger highway. There's no school. I can't get over that. I think if we're looking at whether or not this substantially adversely affects safety, welfare, comfort, which, by the way, comes to a point that I think Mark made, these are not empirically determined. And actually, I, I took a bit of an umbrage with the comment about discounting the public comment because it's not data. Who else knows about the public's safety, welfare, and comfort other than the public? And we've heard from the public. So it's a long way of saying, I, this is very complicated. And it's, on one hand, it's simple. I think it adds risk. The safety aspect of this, and the welfare and comfort, is adversely impacted by positioning a drive-through in this particular location. I don't think that's arbitrary. I don't think it's capricious. And I think I give, I give equal weight to the comments of the public, as I do to the, all due respect to the engineers, and their assessments, because those unfortunately don't take into account the particular circumstances of this property. So... So my point, Mr. Chairman, is I'm inclined to vote against allowing this because I don't think, I, I do think i- i- it's a substantial detriment to the public good under the standard, general standard for, 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 uh, 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 special permits and specifically under, under the, the conditional use provision, that I do think this adversely affects the public health, safety, welfare and comfort, uh, of the community.
Thank you, Manny. Herb?
I would agree with what he said. I was almost going to say the same thing. Uh, and then as far as the data goes, it's probable, probabilistic. It's, uh, like, you know, a hundred year flood event. They can happen every year. They, you can have two, 200, two 100 year events. It's averages, it's not factual. And I'm not going to be, uh, intimidated into voting in favor of this because you want me to discount the opinions of the people that we represent? I, I don't think you should have said that. Anyway.
Mark?
Um, as a voice, my concerns are mainly more around the actual workings of the, uh, of the site. My concerns about not having any type of egress beyond, uh, legally aggress to circumvent the site. Should there be, um, should there be a blocking? You know, if there is issues with the queuing after the, uh, drive through is opened. So I, I'm not inclined at this point.
Yeah, I mean, my, my concern here, my sort of, I, I think the drive through is really going to be a nuisance on this lot and I think it also is going to be a nuisance for the surrounding residential neighborhood in terms of it's going to just change the traffic flow. I mean, I, I, I hear the data that, you know, it's not going to increase volume because people are going down the road, but it is going to change their behavior. And it, you know, people are going to turn right and then they're going to go down Strawberry Hill Road. They're probably going to come down Strawberry Hill Road to Pine Street and enter this place because that, that corner in there is, is tricky right now. And maybe the light will fix it, but we can't, we can't rely on that at this point. So I can't make findings based on that. Denise?
Obviously, I feel the same way. I think that we have to consider the whole piece of the neighborhood and what it's going to do to impact it. And I do think that traffic is a mess. It's going to continue to be a mess with or without a, a signal because of the growth of, of all the building and, um, the population. And another factor versus the other two Wendy's sites is you really won't have a lot of competition where this is. I mean, this is a new venue and I think it will attract, I think this is, if you build it, they will come. And I do think it, it's in the best interest, uh, the community not to have this, a drive through.
So does someone want to make findings? Or? Mark, you want to make findings? You're Denise's favorite findings person.
Is this the revision in January 19?
Uh, yes. And I would just encourage you to, um, you know, just make sure you elaborate a little bit on your rationale.
I do have another comment.
Go ahead, Herb.
Uh, if you're looking for factual data or something to compare to, take a drive around Hyannis, especially the McDonald's on the corner of, I think it's High School Road and North Street.
Yeah.
And that doesn't work. If you get any kind of, I mean, it works for like two or three cars maybe getting in there. The thing, because that was shoehorned into a very small lot, the signage is almost impossible to decipher. And then I could also point to the Dunkin' Donuts at the corner of Bursas Way and 28, behind the gas station. That's just crazy. You have, traffic being, I don't know, if you've ever been, it's really so confusing, it's hard to even describe. But it was shoehorned into a location that just is marginal at best. And it seems that drive throughs are the, the coming thing. I'd love to see you put a Wendy's in like at the corner of, um, where West Main Street hits 28. There is, I don't know, bank or something there, that would be perfect, but this just doesn't work. And it's, it's not like some personal vendetta as, it almost seems like you're suggesting. Anyway. That's it.
All right. With regard to special permit number 2023 dash 010, Arista Hyannis LLC, 240 dash 25C 10 HB Business District, Conditional Use Drive Through, Section 240 dash 25B 22, Note 1, HB Principal Permitted Uses. This is the staff report dated May 2nd, 2023, revised January 19th, 2024. Arista Hyannis LLC has applied for a special permit in accordance with Section 240 dash 25B 22 and 2425C 10, Drive Through for a Proposed Food Service Establishment. The applicant proposes to remodel the former bank building and change the use to a food service establishment with a drive through. The subject property is located at 715 West Main Street, Hyannis, Mass. Anna, do we need to include the other approvals, one through six, or can we go straight to special permit findings?
You can go to special permit findings.
Special permit findings, number one, the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit, Section 240 dash 25B 22 and 24 dash 25C 10, Drive Through for a Proposed Restaurant Allows for a Special Permit. A site plan has been reviewed and found approvable in accordance with the article herein, subject only to the issuance of a special permit, see letter dated April 11th, 2023. The board is in receipt of 86 correspondence in opposition, one in support of the project.
Mr. Chair, can I just?
Yeah, go ahead, Anna.
There's an update, 91 letters, correspondence in opposition.
That includes our in-person?
Yes.
I had a total, yeah, I had 11 speakers in person.
Amended, the board is in receipt of 91 correspondence in opposition and one in support of the project. After an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal is in conflict with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would represent a substantial detriment significant, um, to the public good or the neighborhood affected due to the introduction of an auto-dominated fast food use into an existing high-volume roadway network and intersection that the subject property utilizes for access and egress, further impairing the known concern as stated in peer review. In addition, the discretionary use proposed creates concerns due to its proximity to the unsafe and overburdened intersection adjacent to the property created, creating added unsafe turning movements. Lastly, the site is in a unique location. Pardon me. Sorry, where are we here? Lastly, the site is in a u- in a unique location and proximity to the high school. And after hearing testimony from the public school administration, the board maintains their concerns for traffic volume, turning movements and parking impacts, um, site hazard and how it interacts with the neighborhood.
So Mark's made a unfavorable findings motion. Um, we need a second based on his, um, his unfavorable findings.
I'll second that.
Herb? Yeah?
I'm wondering if we need to make a finding specific to section?
My mic's not on.
Your mic's not on.
Oh, your mic's not on.
Sorry. Section 24025, which is what the applicant specifically presented this under, that is, and I understand what, what the fourth paragraph talks about, the general standards for approving a special permit, but whether the uniqueness of, of, of the, the, um, conditional use of a, uh, 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 drive through.
On 20, on 24025C?
Right. That, finding that the proposed use substantially adversely affects the public.
Uh, Jim, I would defer to you on this one, if you can.
Absolutely, I think it's, it's wise to reference 24025C and, and the subject matter that is before you. So it's, it's specifically identified substantially adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, comfort or convenience of the community. And you can certainly expand upon that if you, if you wish.
Okay. Yeah, Manny, that, yeah, that's a good point. So, so 24025C reads as Jim just read, um, in reference to drive throughs for banks, retail uses, restaurants and other food service establishments. So I guess we would add to the find, add to, um, Mark's findings that, um, it substantially adversely affects public health, safety, welfare, comfort and convenience of the community.
Yeah.
So do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, Herb, seconds. A roll call vote on the unfavorable findings. I'll say, I'm sorry, not roll call vote. Aye.
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 Manny? Aye. Denise? So the unfavorable findings pass. Ms. Attorney Cox, aye. We did not approve. Do we have conditions?
I don't believe so.
Make a motion to deny.
You want a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to make a motion to?
So moved.
Well, Mark, I was going to have Mark make.
No problem. So I'd like to make a motion to deny special permit number 2023 dash 011. Uh, sorry, 010.
Second. All those in favor of denying the motion?
Aye.
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 So the motion is, uh, the special permit is denied. Okay, moving along to new business. Uh, in appeal number 2023 dash 042, Patricia Baker and David D. Moore as appellants are appealing the issuance of a building permit, building permit 23 dash 780 issued on November 1st, 2023 to EJ Jacksonhamer for the construction of a 3100 square foot, three-bedroom home for Janet Holian, trustee for the Holian Family Realty Trust. The subject property is located at 240 Windswept Way, Osterville, Massachusetts, and 250 Windswept Way, Osterville, Mass, as shown on assessor's map, 051 is parcel 012 zero, dash 001 and 012 dash 000, respectively, it's located in the residence F1 RF1 and the resource protection, RPOD district. So we did receive a, um, uh, correspondence to continue this to February 28th, 2024. Um, I'll make a motion to, Anna, that's, that's okay? Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion to continue appeal number 2023 dash 042 to February 28th, 2024. I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, moving along, in appeal number 2023 dash 044, George and Deborah Allegro have petitioned for a variance pursuant to 240 dash 13 ERF1 Bulk Regulations, minimum yard, uh, side yard set by the petitioner, CK variance to construct an unconditioned screen porch over an existing patio 12.6 feet from the lot line where 15 feet is required. The subject property is located at 202 C V Ave, Osterville, Massachusetts. As shown on assessor's map, 138 is parcel 014. It's located in the RF1 zoning district. Do we have the petitioner here? Is this one?
Anna, do we have a, a letter on that one, on Allegro?
Yep.
Is that a, to continue?
Does it have a date on it?
Yeah, it's in the system.
Yeah, I'm trying to load it. Oh, here we go. Uh, February 7th. All right, so the applicant has requested a continuation to February 7th, 2024. I'll make a motion to continue.
Mr. Chairman, there are two items by the same applicant and I think the request for continuance applies to both of them.
That's correct.
Yes.
Still has to be read in.
Right, but.
I mean, we can just, we can vote on it. I'll make a motion to continue appeal number 2023 dash 044 to February 7th, 2024 at 7:02.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm in favor. You have a nice time? I'd miss that. And now in appeal number 2023 dash 045, George and Deborah Allegro have applied for a, to modify special permit number 2016 dash 018, modification number three, to allow for the construction of a screen porch over an existing patio which would increase lot coverage from 16.2% to 18.3%. Subject property is located at 202 C V Ave, Osterville, Massachusetts, as shown on assessor's map, 138 as parcel 014. It's located in RF1 zoning district. Um, again, Attorney Schultz has requested a continuance on this to February 7th, 2024. So I'll make a motion to continue appeal number 2023 dash 045 to 7:05 on February 7th, 2024. I need a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that it?
I think so.
Um, correspondence, I don't think we had anything, uh, other than some canceled meetings. Upcoming hearings, February 7th, February 28th and March 13th. I think the 7th is Zoom and the 28th is in person? And the 13th is Zoom? In person, okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn. I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.